May I have your attention, please? Today is July the 15th, and we are pulling to order the Mount Vernon City School District Work Session for the Board of Trustees. Let them all please stand for the presidency.
... United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that Trustee Stephen Kelly and Trustee Wanda White is joining tonight's work session. There are no comments. Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Cappy. Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Trustee Scott.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Tiki Mitchell.
Present.
And President Marrow.
Present. Thank you, Clerk James. I would like to make an announcement. We are treading on new territory, or we are beginning what we call work sessions, where the public will be allowed to watch us as we work and discuss items that are on the resolutions. We did send out a notice that public comment would be allowed during our work sessions. However, under review of our Policy Number 1520, the work sessions are not subject to public comment. However, because we didn't notice the public, and we informed the public that we would receive public comment, we are asking our trustees if there's no objection, if we may suspend the rules for this evening and allow the public comments to proceed. But moving forward, we will honor our current policy, and we will also take into consideration a review of that policy to see if it still meets the needs of our district. Thank you.
Is there any objection from any of the trustees that we proceed to public comment? Okay. We're hearing none. We have adopted it by consensus. Thank you. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comments at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And importantly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 12:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, Maryland, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email at rj@mtvernancsdd.gov. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism, however identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak, up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Mark Stuckey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Stuckey. I am the president of the city of Melbourne. I'm here to speak on a quick topic. I hope I can break my record tonight. First, before I start, superintendence district. I gotta say, you go. I loved the program that you had Saturday at the board. You were very patient. You took your notes. You listened to... Yeah, I know, the six grades. And... Someone to hear and take those notes, because for a very long time, it's, "Okay, I got you. Okay." And it's going straight out the door. So I would like to say kudos. I'm here tonight for something very simple, and it's regarding a donation towards Mandela Building. I would like to have five to 10 minutes in a executive session. I do not want to say what it is on camera. I would like to do this off-camera, so you can see the full picture. It will wind up being, I feel, very beneficial for the district. Okay? So please, can I have a dialogue with you regarding a donation towards Mandela? It's to help the building. I broke my record.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. We will take under consideration your request, but we will poll the board after. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Monroe?
Greetings. Oh, for the record, my name is Jeff Monroe. I would like to greet all trustees, and especially welcome aboard to the newly elected trustees, and again, welcome aboard to Dr. Strickland. And of course, greetings to the community. I would like to address what is currently labeled as Resolution 5 TAC for Authorization to Hire Staff for the No Place for Hate District Leadership. I'm gonna use only a brief quote from that resolution. It says, "The district NPFH leadership team will attend webinars, consult with ADL staff, and research best practices for bully prevention activities and promoting tolerance and unity." Before I go any further, I'll preface, actually, to thank Dr. Doggett for having approached me, because I raised this issue initially. The issue I'll describe soon. But just want to thank Dr. Doggett for making the initiative on Saturday to have a brief discussion about what I'm about to talk about. Thanks, Dr. Doggett. So there is some understanding that this policy will at least be proposed for the school district going forward, and it's been active since, I understand, 2016. So my problem with the policy is that it validates the legitimacy of the Anti-Defamation League. I'll read into the record, which I also sent by link to all trustees. Hopefully, everyone was able to see it. But the Mondo Wies July 7, 2025 story, titled, "The National Education Association Just Voted to Cut All Ties to the Anti-Defamation League." I'll just briefly read a part of that story. "The ADL has been a ubiquitous presence in U.S. schools for nearly 40 years, pushing curriculum, direct programming, and teacher training into K-12 schools, and increasingly into universities, often over the objections of students, parents, and educators. While the ADL has positioned itself as an anti-bias organization, parenthetically, until recently publicly abandoning much of that work, it has increasingly been understood as policing and repressing social justice movements and deploying, quote, 'civil rights talk,' unquote, to derail change." Further, the report says, "Union delegates speaking on the Assembly floor rejected the ADL's abuse of the term antisemitism to punish critics of Israel and its use of hyperinflated statistics on hate crimes to gin up fears about Jewish safety and paint calls for Palestinian rights as hate speech." This is a concern, because frankly, the report cites a factual event of the weekend. The NEA is not what I'm here to speak for or about, but it cites the progression of an increasingly problematic [bleep] policy. And one of the reasons, to summarize... Is that a one-minute warning? Or... Oh, warning. So, thank you. The policy of supporting supposedly Jewish advocacy organizations in the interest of silencing pro-Palestine protests or support is an increasingly problematic issue to democracy itself, to safety and security of all oppressed peoples, and quite frankly, it validates a longstanding criticism of colonialism in this country. The problem with this in particular is that the ADL has been, and not just the ADL, but as an example, it has been guilty of using antisemitism as a broad-stroke defense against criticizing the government of Israel ostensibly to defend the interests of Jewish people, which is just morally incorrect. As an African person who understands what it means to inappropriately use racism as a defense against critiquing black politicians, for instance, like a black president who starts seven wars, or a black vice president who supports the genocide, this whole critique of supporting black people just because you don't want to seem racist is, in fact, morally incorrect, as is the ADL. So for that reason, we want to require that...
If you could just wrap it up, Mr. Monroe. Thank you.
We want to require that the board follows the NEA's lead by cutting all ties with the ADL. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, and that ends public comments. Dr. Strickland? Dr. Strick... Okay.
I'll take some ice. You don't mind?
Trustee White, can you mute your mic, please?
Take some ice. Oh, my Jesus.
Uh-uh. We want some ice, too.
All right. Great evening, President Marrow, Vice President Mitchell, fellow Board of Trustee... Folks. Sorry. I'm used to calling folks commissioners. Your trustees here. I'm very happy to the public for coming and for the viewing audience, and I'm here to make a presentation regarding work sessions. So first and foremost, I really wanted to level-set with the Board of Education to really explain why work sessions will be extremely important in what we do for the city-school district. I've done many observations of board meetings prior to coming aboard, and one of the things that I felt that was truly, truly missing were the student outcomes component. So there's multiple conversations that we are talking about, which are all extremely important. However, we've left the main portion of our responsibility, which is teaching and learning of the district, out of the board meetings, or that has not been the focal point. So I would say, you know, we're talking about administrative tasks. Many items that board trustee members seemingly are focused on are very much administrative day-to-day operations. Those are the things that we are supposed to do in order to actually be able to get the work done, so that student outcomes are mattering the most. So the current reality versus the impact, you know, our meetings are consumed by routine approvals. I wanted the work sessions to be in place, so that we actually do have those discussions around resolutions and/or IE tabs, so that we can answer your questions. And if we can't answer those questions, we're gonna actually admit that we can't answer those questions, and be sure to get you the answers that you need within the 48 hours. We have limited time for strategic discussion, so you're gonna receive a few presentations tonight, one on our iReady end-of-the-year data, as well as our school comprehensive education plans, which are tailored to what is happening in schools. And from those presentations, it is my hope that we actually begin to discuss what is happening at the building levels. We're currently reactive rather than proactive. I want the trustees, I want you all to know, that one of the largest responsibilities of you all is student outcomes and fiscal management and fiscal responsibility. And you leave the administrative task and duties to myself and my staff. And again, like I said before, minimum focus on student achievement data. It's in the books. And I really want to just reset and get to a space where we are actually talking about what matters most, and that is what our babies or children are learning in the school buildings. The impact that it has, we have missed opportunities for improvement. There's disconnection from education outcomes. It's inefficient use of board expertise. So there's many of you that have different expertises on so many different things. We have financial managers, former principals, people that work with the government, things of that nature, and we really need to strategize together in order to ensure that outcomes are paramount. And then finally, it reduces the community confidence. I will repeat again, my responsibility is to make sure that board members, you're up here, you're knowledgeable, you're being able to speak for the district, and vice versa. You're up there to look at me, make sure that I get answers. I won't have all the answers, but you know that I'm gonna find them and get them to you in a timely fashion. So key features of effective work sessions. First, we will have a data-driven focus, which is a regular review of student achievement metrics. So every single month, we will have presentations that I've already begun to map out, based on a calendar, based on when report cards come, so that you can see what the status is of where we are in the district. You know, my superintendent goals that I am in the process of developing, and will also be having conversations with you all as to where we want to take the district, that is going to be monitored. I need to make sure that I'm able to meet the goals. You need to hold me accountable by making sure that we are meeting the goals as a district. Strategic planning. I still have not located a long-term strategic plan, and I know that. I'm not gonna find it, so I'm gonna have to begin to develop this strategic plan as a district, so that we know where we're actually going by the year 2030. Policy development. All I'm gonna say is 2006, that's when the last slew of policies went forward, and we really have to get back on track. I've already printed out the mandatory policies that are established by New York State, and have begun to split them up, so that we are having policy conversations that will then go into the works, that will then go into the board business meeting, so that we get these policies up to date and they're current. And finally, stakeholder engagement, meaningful dialogue with educators, parents, and community members, which is an example of what we already have saw, in which we're gonna allow individuals to talk about resolutions in particular, or tabs in particular. And it creates a space for boards to govern strategically rather than manage operationally. So again, I want you to leave the operations up to myself and the staff, and I need you to focus on the student outcomes, the student achievement, so that we can move our district forward and be a competitor in Westchester County. So again, connecting work sessions to student outcomes. You will have, in terms of academic achievement, you will have a regular analysis of assessment data, identifying trends and intervention strategies. We won't just tell you, "Here's the plan." We will tell you, "If we're going in the right direction, this is why we're going in the right direction. If we're going in the wrong direction, these are the strategies that we need to employ in order to pivot accordingly." We want to talk about college and career readiness. I've now, I mean, 15 days in, have gotten the opportunity to see young ladies that graduated from this district with their program for Flight 914, and just to hear about those college and career readiness, things that they are doing for the individuals in our district was, like, paramount. And those are the things that we need to be talking about in these work sessions. What is the outward trajectory for our students? Equity and access. We know that our district is a targeted district because of special education and because of our English language learner achievement. And we need to be able to take a microscopic look at those two subgroups in particular, and as well as our black boys, which tend to fall behind in the ranks, and we have to actually start extracting those data points and figure out how we lift our most marginalized students. And then finally, whole-child development. We're addressing the social-emotional learning, mental health, and student engagement. There are times we are going to bring in chronic absenteeism, daily average attendance. We're gonna be looking at our out-of-school suspensions in long-term and short-term, and in school. We have to have conversations like those things, because what gets monitored gets done, and that's gonna be paramount to bring to the Board of Ed. The expected benefits, so there's gonna be enhanced governance. There's more strategic, less reactive board decisions. Superintendent can focus on running the day-to-day operations for the district. I've come from a large district of 22,000 students with 40-plus schools, and I want to be able to come in here and be able to be in the schools to find out what's happening at the ground level. We won't be able to change what's happening in the district unless I and my team are in classrooms. Improved outcomes are gonna come, because the monitoring will be there. Data-driven focus leads to better student results. We all know that. If we're monitoring the achievement, then it really sets the tone that everyone needs to move in the same direction. I want to be that superintendent that focuses on the teaching and learning of the district as well. I know I also have to focus on the financial acumen. I also know I have to focus on the operations. However, my main focus is that I am the instructional leader for the district, and I have to be able to talk to what is happening in terms of curriculum, teaching and learning, and the finances that impact that, the operations that impact that. Strong leadership. You truly will become strong leaders in the community when you show your relentless focus on student outcomes. When you are able to talk about how you are working to make sure we increase proficiency rates with English language arts, that's going to be the paramount things. Not necessarily being everyone's savior, which we know. I've seen the emails fly to you, and that doesn't have the outcomes that are needed. What it does, it takes us from the day-to-day operations of the district and causes more confusion at times, because at times you also get half stories. And I want to, again, I want to be responsive to you all, and that's why we're developing mechanisms, cadences, on how we can keep things flowing in upward fashion, but being responsible to the community and to you all, most importantly. And then finally, great efficiency. I told you all, my bedtime is at 8:30, and I can't be here all night. So in order for us to become more efficient, I want to make sure that we are on point as an administrative team, so that you have no qualms about what is happening from the day-to-day operations. I know we are gonna have a lot of work to do, but we will get there together. Finally, our work sessions will include presentations regarding academics, a presentation regarding operational supports, review of policies, review of tabs and resolutions for the board business meeting. And yes, I am saying there has to be a shift. I'm not one for walk-on resolutions. I'm not one for, you know, resolutions even a week in advance. Like, I want you to have stuff early in advance, so you know exactly what it is you're voting for, and the impact that it has on the teaching and learning of the district, and the goal is to move the items to a consent agenda. And with that being said, I will take any of your questions, and I want to apologize in advance that I did not number the slides, but if you just give me the title, if you have anything in particular, I will gladly answer.
Does anyone have a question? Trustee McDonough?
Thank you. That was fantastic. One question about the policies and procedures. I know you're aware, we had worked on... Yes. They were getting close to being presented. We've reviewed the draft. Will those be incorporated into the work you're doing? You're working off of those?
Yes, absolutely. So what I actually, myself and the in-house counsel, during our weekly one-to-one, already met to discuss how we are actually going to review the policies. So one of the concerns that I had is that the policies were seemingly starting with him in this office, going to the board, but then we didn't give other entities time or input into those policies. So I'm in the process of creating a policy roadmap, and that's basically a system in which we have students weigh in on certain policies. Our parent PTA's weigh in on policies. Our administrators weigh on policies. And then when you get the policies, you are basically just looking at the little tweaks or nuances that need to possibly change, but that's you all respecting us as the educational experts, so that we are giving you something sound that's gonna actually work for the day-to-day operations of the district. It's gonna take a minute, because I'm still learning the different organizations that we have in this community, but I want to be sure that we're capturing voices from not just board and executive cabinet members, but also all the stakeholders in some way, shape, or form. Yes, sir?
Anyone else have questions? Trustee Middleton?
Thank you, Dr. Strickland. Well said, and love the presentation. I just want to say, how is it that we would go about, because you did say sometimes when you get via email...
Yes.
...situations and circumstances to mistreatment, whether it be staff members, or somebody in civil service, or et cetera, in this district? How is it, when it's true to what is said?
Yes.
How is it that you will handle it, or you want it handled...
Yes.
...in order for people to move forward, to be happy, in position for us to move the district forward together? Because sometimes, listen, it's a new day.
Yes.
It's a new day. And that's been past practices.
Yes.
Where people were mistreated 500%.
I believe you.
And we don't want to ignore it, because then...
Absolutely.
...when you're in an unhappy place, it's hard to move forward.
Yes, ma'am.
So how is it that we will proceed to, or how is it that you wouldn't want us to proceed to...
Absolutely.
...handle situations that should fall in your lap? And our clerk?
Trustee Middleton, I appreciate that question, and I appreciate your vulnerability for asking that, and I appreciate your faith in me for asking that. When individuals come to you, it really sets the mechanism up for us to already be on the defensive. And remember, there's three sides to every story: their side, our side, and the truth. And when individuals just skip us and go to you, then that is like you going to mom, and then mom says no, and then I'm gonna ask dad, and then dad says yes. It causes confusion amongst administration. It causes confusion amongst you all, and I want us to be operating in a parallel cadence, so that we're working together. My job, my responsibility is, when, excuse me, when you get an email, or when you get a concern, you say, "I'm going to forward that to the clerk and the superintendent." And what I, my responsibility then becomes, is to alert you within a reasonable amount of time what the resolve is. So often, like, I mean, I'm generally able to get on it. However, I want to be responsive and do justice to actually investigating situations, but I also understand that you want to, I mean, people are going to you. You're the, they're your constituents. I get that. But I will make sure that I then follow up with you about what I've done to ensure that you have the information that you need. And unfortunately, sometimes people are not happy with the resolve, and that has to be understood. But generally, people will know why I made a decision, because I've at least talked with them about the decision. And that's what I commit to you all. And we'll have more talk probably, or more discussions around communication and cadence at a board retreat, or what have you, under the direction of the board leadership. Yes, ma'am?
Do we have any other questions? From the trustee Scott?
Thank you very much. It was great. Your presentation was great. I also enjoyed that weekly update that you gave us.
Yep. It's confidential. Yes, yes, absolutely.
One of the things that, you know, when we were running for these positions...
Can we...
And unfortunately, sometimes people are not happy with the resolve, and that has to be understood. But generally, people will know why I made a decision because I've at least talked with them about the decision. And that's what I commit to you all. And we'll have more talk probably, or more discussions around communication and cadence at a board retreat or what have you under the direction of the board leadership. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any other questions from the trustee Scott?
Thank you very much. It was great. Your presentation was great. I also enjoyed that weekly update that you gave us.
Yep. It's confidential. Yes, yes, absolutely.
One of the things that, you know, when we were running for these positions.
Can we talk into the mic?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I feel like I got a deep voice.
I know.
One of the things that we were running on when we were going for these positions was about working with all stakeholders.
Yes.
You talked about that in your presentation.
Yes.
And I know you spoke about the board and how you wanted to work with us. I feel that we also have to bring the community, the city, into this. So I'm just curious, what is your take in regards to bringing the city into the discussions?
Yes.
Into the movement that we're trying to do with respect to this district and allowing for the community to see that we are in this together versus being separate in silos? So if you could just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So one of the things we have to be conscious of is that if the school district does well, the city does well. If the city does well, the school district does well. We have to work in tandem together to ensure that student outcomes are there. There's going to be opportunities. Funding is plagued everywhere. So what are the resources that the city has that they can lend a hand? What are the resources that we have where we can lend a hand? We know that building infrastructure, having places to meet is an issue in Mount Vernon. So how do we help support the city to get our youth off the streets to be able to do productive programming? The instance was this weekend. I of course wanted to open up one of our buildings so those young ladies could actually run a positive event to talk about college and career readiness with our young people. That happened. That's a prime example. I've already begun meeting with the mayor. That happens once a month, and it will be to talk about pertinent issues that are going around this city school district that pertain to our children. And guess what? We're not always going to agree, and it's okay, but we're going to have a mutual understanding of where we all need to go because I know that Mayor Patterson Howard knows where we want our youth to go, and I know where I want our youth to go, and guess what? That is the same star, almost. How we get there is different, and like I said, I'm committed to working with those individuals. We already met also with the office, or I met with the Office of Emergency Management, considering what, I mean, I didn't know that it was going to be flooding all over the place yesterday. I was scared. I mean, you know what I mean? But I have to have a relationship with the city to find that information out because guess what? I'm not driving around. I'm on the 11th floor. You know, I can't necessarily see what's happening in certain spaces. So if we, if we don't have that relationship, then we're, one, somewhat out of compliance with certain things because, you know, we should be scheduling like lockdown drills with the police department. They should be doing one with each school to make sure we're ready for anything. We need to make sure that the first responders are there in the event that something happens. If we have a fractured relationship, that partnership, that work doesn't happen, and guess who fails or who suffers? The babies, the kids. And we can't do that. So again, everything they do, I'm not going to be like yay. Everything we do, they're not going to be like yay. However, we do have one common theme, and that's our children.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly and trustee White, we know that you are virtual. Do you have any questions? Trustee White, if you can unmute yourself if you have a question?
It ain't muted. The fan going.
Okay, so I'm imagining that you don't. If you can signal us and let us know if you do. I just don't want to leave you behind because you're virtual. Are there any other questions? I do have one question.
Yes.
And it's regarding the policies.
Yes.
You indicated that the policies were old from 2006. I do recall that we had an overhaul of the policies, maybe 2022. So I would like to, if we could take a look at when the last time those policies were reviewed.
Yes.
I do understand that there was a lot of work done, so I just want to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts.
Absolutely, and I want to say this. This is nothing different than a lot of other districts. So policies just, they, first of all, change so often. There's updates, things of that nature, and regardless, they still should be on a rotation for review, and then we have to update the date. So not disrespecting any work that has been done, I want to make that very clear, but nonetheless, making sure that we put those mandatory policies up for review so we're just looking at it and we have a cadence for review.
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Trustee Vice President Mitchell has a question.
Yes, actually, absolutely amazing presentation, Dr. Strickland. Thank you. I think this work session is a true example of the moving forward, and I think Flat 914 event that happened at Grimes was another example of partnering with the city, which is definitely examples rather than just rhetoric. Shout out to Mr. Remundi and everybody that was involved in getting that building permit approved as quickly, Dr. Cornelius Severn.
Absolutely.
Severn Cornelius. Question I have, as part of your ramping up for the school year, are you going to look at the science and math curriculum especially? I mean, like, from a standpoint of historically, what has that curriculum looked like? Do you see, or do you plan on viewing it from a standpoint of, has the curriculum that our teachers have been asked to instruct our students? Has it been effective? Has it been consistent? Do we have room for what we should be recognizing as target goals? Will we even be looking at possibly changing current plans in place? For instance, I know I spoke to one teacher who was a middle school teacher who told me there's some idea of trying to teach students two maths at the same time
Yes.
this school year, which that seems like a very heavy load, but I'm hoping that, I'm wondering, is that going to be something that you're going to look into also timely so that we'll be ready for September?
Absolutely. Teaching and learning is everything, and as I've coined myself, the teaching and learning superintendent. You know, again, teaching and learning is paramount in the school district. I've met with Dr. Doggett probably every single day since I've been here, and even before, we've had open and honest, great conversations about where he was trying to go, where we need to go. I have already my own ideas about where we need to go. He's open in the listening, and I'm opening to listening with him, and I have begun meeting with the directors to hear about what it is that, what are their trials? Where do they feel that we should go? Sort of testing out what's happening. I need to do a curriculum audit. I do need to do a curriculum audit, however, that is within due time. And it has to be one curriculum at a time almost for me with some other work happening with different subcommittees and things of that nature. The biggest thing with teachers, we do not want to overwhelm them. We do not want to just simply overhaul things and do it all at once. What I have to do is with the team, look at what area is in the most need, and I'm going to do that via data. And once we get the data, then I know where to begin, and once I know where to begin, that's when we start ramping up what these curricula look like. One of the things that I do know that we're going to have to begin to measure is how are we doing in terms of walkthroughs across the entire system? What's happening in the day to day operations of a classroom? And as of right now, there's no holistic way of looking at any data about what's happening, even if folks are using the current curriculum. You can't even say a curriculum is truly invalid if they're not implementing it or if there's no plan. So we're going to have to begin to take a look at all of the things, and as I stated before, I am committed to presenting to you all so that you are always knowing the direction of where we're going and how we're getting there, and if we have to pivot, why we have to pivot, or if we're going to keep going the course, this is what we're doing. So I hope I answered your question. I kind of skated, but I think I got to the end. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, we can move to the next item.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President, trustees, superintendent, cabinet, and community members. I will be giving two presentations today. The first one is pretty straightforward. It's going to be about the purpose of the 2526 School Comprehensive Educational Plans, and this ties directly to Resolution 5.1. So our school comprehensive educational plan, we call them SCPs, and each of our 13 schools have completed them. It is a requirement by New York State. The SCP is a strategic plan developed by schools to improve student outcomes. It outlines goals, strategies, and actions aligned with the district priorities and state expectations. Now, this is submitted to the state. Each year, it goes through the district for approval. The plans are not always new plans. Like Dr. Strickland said, we don't always overhaul. There are times we have to refine or expand what we already built on. So think of this plan as an improvement plan that asks the following questions: what are we doing? Why are you doing it? And how will you measure it? Key components of the SCP is a needs assessment, and that's based on school performance data. As Dr. Strickland mentioned, there's going to be a stronger focus on data, and some of the data that's pulled for the SCPs are local assessments. Those are our common assessments and quizzes, our iReady data, our state data, suspension data, attendance data, and our DTSTE surveys. So think of that as the why. Smart goals from the data, smart goals will be set, and our SCPs, think of that as the how. Evidence-based strategies, which is aligned to the Every Student Succeed Act. And this law governs public education that was passed in 2015, which gives opportunities for our students to succeed and gives schools more flexibility in their accountability systems. Think of that as the what. And again, you engage families, community, and input, and that is the how. The SCPs are designed to promote continuous school improvement, and that is the consistent review of data to make decisions. It's also aligned with goals and district and state priorities, and it supports academic achievement and equity for all students. Again, this ties directly to the point of entry of access to education for our students with disabilities and our Ls, and it's also tied to our tiered support for students across all levels and engages all stakeholders in the implementation and planning process. I think the batteries died. So our SCPs align with district goals by focusing on data-driven instruction, enhancing student engagement and well-being. That's instructional, and our social emotional learning, promoting culturally responsive education, which values the diverse backgrounds and experiences of students, and supporting professional development for educators, which I'll get into at the end of the presentation. So it supports student achievement and equity by identifying and addressing the learning gaps that occurs in the needs assessment, providing targeted interventions and support. Think of that as the what. And also in this plan, it explicitly explains how schools are going to monitor progress and make adjustments as needed, so that goes back to how you are doing it. And again, this slide, I just want to talk about some of the themes all schools have submitted their SCPs, which you'll be approving tonight. Some of the themes that emerged were research-based instructional practices, which is our multi-tiered system of supports, social emotional learning, and school and community engagement. So based on that, we will create a professional development plan based on those needs. And as you are aware, Parker is no longer Parker, so Parker has moved to Rebecca Turner, so that plan is now the Rebecca Turner Plan. Leadership Academy, that principal is now going to Benjamin Turner. That program, that SCP was created with both principals because now we have an incoming principal that had to know exactly what that school was doing, and the same thing goes for Honor Academy. So basically, that's it for this presentation. It's very quick. Just let you know, it's a living document. It reflects the school's commitment to excellence, and collaboration is the key to creating it, and you'll be approving that this afternoon, this evening. Okay, so the next presentation, I will be presenting the iReady data for our students in grades K through eight, and I will be doing a three-year trend presentation on our iReady data. So before I get into that, what is iReady? It's an adaptive diagnostic that automatically adjusts the difficulty of questions according to each student's abilities levels. It's our universal screener, an assessment that formulates the next steps and instructions for students in grades K through eight. It is given three times a year, the beginning of year in September, around January, and around May as well. And this assessment is adaptive, and it's designed to identify a student's skill level. So when students take this assessment, they'll get about half the questions right and wrong because the diagnostic is trying to determine exactly where the student's skill level So how is iReady data used? So it's used to analyze individual strengths and areas of need. It informs instruction. It monitors progress throughout the way, and you collaborate with students and families to set goals, to see if those goals are being achieved. But this slide pretty much sums up really what iReady does. The beginning of the year, the universal screener, that information is used to inform. From the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, you progress monitor, and then once you look at the middle of the year data, you take that data to inform and evaluate how you're doing so far if you have to make adjustments. And at the end of the year, iReady data, that's where you want students to be. How many students are on grade level by the end of the year? And you take that information, you evaluate to see how you're doing, which informs the next year's practices. And just so you know, that iReady is our universal screener. However, we use several different data points to make instructional decisions. We don't solely rely on iReady. We use local data assessments. Of course, we use the New York State data and teacher-informed data as well. So I know this is very small, but I want you to get the picture of iReady. Anything in the green is good. Yellow is approaching, and red is in the danger zone. So anything, any area you see that is green is on grade level or above. Yellow is one grade level below, and red is grade level below grade level. So if you look at the slide, this is the iReady ELA beginning of the year, where students were in September 2024 as compared to where they were in 2025. So if you look at the beginning of the year, our students, 24% of our students were on grade level. At the end of the year, 52% of our students were on grade level. So that was a 28% increase of our students ending this year at grade level. If you look at the students that are in the danger zone, which is the red, it was 39% in September, and that number is down to 22%. So this is a year comparison, beginning of the year this year to the end of this year, or excuse me, last school year, because we're in a new calendar year, so I'm sorry about that. So what I'm going to present to you now, and I'm going to present it on separate slides and give you a summary slide, just so you can see the growth that we've made over time. So this was the iReady ELA diagnostic at the end of the year in 2022, 2023, which means at the end of that school year, this is where students were on grade level. So as you can see, it was 37% of students that were on grade level. I'm combining the green, above and on grade level, and 38% of our students that were below grade level. Now, I can clearly hear trustee Wanda White, who was on the education committee meeting when she looked at that number, said, I don't like this number right here. And I let her know that's our baseline. We're going to do something about it over the next two years. So we're going to get into that in a couple of slides. 2023, 2024, as you can see, the previous year, we had 37% of our students exiting or entering the next grade on grade level. 2023, 2024, we had 47% of our students on grade level and 25% of our students below grade level. And again, you just saw this slide right here, 52% of our students that were on grade level and 22%. But I'm going to show you what the three-year comparison looks like on one slide for ELA. So as you can see, the greens are going up, the reds are going down. We had 37% of our students on grade level at the end of the year in 2022, 2023. Three years later, we're at 50%, which was the last school year, 52% of our students are leaving the grade, leaving that school year on grade level. So over three years, we had a 50%. we had a 15% increase of our students exiting the grade level on grade level. And as you can see, our 38% of our students who were below grade level, that number has been reduced down to 22%. And the students who were three or more grade levels below, which we explained in subsequent, in previous presentations, it's going to take a longer time to get those students out of the red. But we went from 27% down to 13%. We reduced those numbers almost by half. As I move on to math, again, I'm going to just read the numbers for you. As you can see, but clearly looking at it from beginning of the year. This was last school year, beginning of the year and end of year in mathematics. Students were at 12%. Now, of course, they haven't been taught the math content because it's new content. So that number usually is low, lower than ELA. After getting a full years of teaching and going through the interventions and the strategies, as you can see, that number has increased from 12 to 46% of our students on grade level in this one school year that just previously passed. We had 44% of our students below grade level, and we were able to cut that number down in half in one school year. Because one of the things I wanted to do is when we, when I started this job, the immediate goal was to get rid of the Level Ones. We have to get out of the danger zone. So we always set a goal, get rid of 15% of our, 50% of our Level Ones. And as you can see, we were able to do this this year in math. Now, I'm going to go back to the three-year trend. And as you can see where we were in 2022. And again, these are the students at the end of the year that are leaving that school year on grade level. So in 2022, 2023 school year, 32% of our students left on grade level. 37% were below grade level, which is a lot. The next school year, we put some things in place. As you can see, for the following school year, we've had some increases. At the end of the following school year, we were at 37% of our students at or above grade level and 24% of our students that were below grade level. So you could automatically see, immediately see a reduction in the level of students below grade level. In last year's math, we ended, which you saw on the previous slide, at 46% of our students in the green and 20% of our students in the red and about 33% of our students that are one grade level below. And we have interventions for that to get those students to green. We want to make sure we don't have any regression and they fall back to students below grade level. So for our I-ready math final diagnostic, this is the three-year trend in math. As you can see, over the years, we have more students leaving at the end of the year on grade level. We went from 32% in 2022 to 2023 to 46% of our students on grade level in math. Are we where we want to be? No, but are we making progress? Yes, we are. We've had 37% of our students below grade level or three grade levels below three years ago. This year, we're at 20%. So we decreased the number of Level Ones, students who are performing in the red, by 17%. And we've increased our greens by 14%. So what we hope to see on our New York State assessments, we set some goals over the past years in that we want 75% of our students performing at accountabilities levels two, three, and four on our New York State assessments. We want a 3% subgroup proficiency increase for our grades three to eight assessments in our regions. And we're also looking at our New York State District-wide test results, which are linked to our teachers and principals APR. So what we did was an alignment. So everything is working in tandem to increase student outcomes. Some of the things that we've done, we've made an immediate shift from balanced literacy. We started to focus on the science of reading. We started implementing the literacy briefs from New York State. We've implemented the K-3 Foundation's Phonics Program. We have a four-through-six phonics program, which is called Foundation, which we knew we had in Learning A through Z. We were already paying for it. We didn't know we had it until we did a curriculum assessment two years ago. We started doing a little bit more focus in writing. And for our math, we started to emphasize the use of manipulatives, the concrete pictorial and abstract. We focus a lot on our small group instruction, our tiered instruction, and a weekly application of writing to get these results. So at the end of the day, we are moving in the right directions. Are we where we want to be? Not yet, but we will get there. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Doggett. I do have a few questions. So we're always looking at where we are between expectations versus actuals. And of course, a lot of times, we're looking at the comparison of our district facing its academic challenges versus other districts facing similar. Would you, what metric do we use to ensure that we're on target? Are we, you said we're not on target, of course. But what, what do we use to determine what the expectation should be? Is it just what the state expects us to be? And that's what we do, or?
No, we look to see where we are, and we set some academic goals and some instructional goals. Some of them are generic, based on where we are. Like immediately, like I said in the beginning, we were so far behind, we automatically wanted to target our Level Ones. Yeah, our Level One. So we set some goals. We put some things in place, which is our MTSS. We have tiered support. And we set goals based on where each student, each school is, but also as a district. So based on that information, if we want to set goals, 5% increase, 3% increase, how do we get there? That's in the SCPs and also the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. And it's also in the resolutions that you approve. So all the committee work that we're doing, the professional development, you can see some of the outcomes in here. But what we want to do is take the I-ready data that we use, because that's our local data that we can control. We also want to look at the state data. That gives us a better measure. So even though it starts in grades three to eight, we can look at those skills that students are deficient in and backwards map to make sure students in grades pre-K, K, and 1 get those prerecorded skills to close the achievement gap by third grade.
I appreciate that. I mean, and what do you think about? How do you, how do we? I wanted to say what factors you think would have impacted us from seeing better gains. But the other question is, is there any, any thought pattern of shifting? There's a teach, there's a teach-to-test atmosphere. We're seeing it. We're hearing about it, not just from the students who are expressing academic burnout. We're hearing from teachers in our district as well. How do you, do you, how do we move? How do we shift from that teach-just-to-test tactic so that we can bring an actual foster-in learning back to the scene? Because if you really think about it, the students are really just, for the most part, being taught so they can take a test. And then that's it. And they're not retaining. Do you feel, is that a factor?
Yes, it's a factor. I wouldn't say it's a major factor. I would say it's a major factor around testing time because teachers get anxious. They may not have covered material. So they're trying to rush and get the material in, and they start teaching towards the test. So some of the way that our instruction is designed, that some of the test prep is embedded in the actual flow of the lesson. However, to go back to the beginning of what you said, we were doing way too much. We had a lot of programs, and a lot of our schools were not using the core curriculum, and we weren't able to measure anything. So as you can see from some of the resolutions that we put out, we're streamlining and pulling away. So if we have our I-ready, and that's the mechanism that we're using, we have some schools that may be using other components. So how can we measure when we're doing 17, 18, 19, 20 different things? So we started to remove and streamline. So what you see is part of that process. So that process of what you're talking about is actually in place. It just takes a little time.
Do we have other questions? Trustee Peterson?
I do. Thank you so much, Dr. Doggett. As a parent who, and a former substitute teacher in this district during the pandemic, I got baptized by fire into I-ready. But I have definitely seen the difference in from when I was teaching in the classroom to what my daughter is bringing home now. And I have seen the, how she has caught on to, you know, the data that's given, what she's learning. And she is retaining a lot, I must say. And she's got the memory of a goldfish sometimes. But so I have definitely seen a difference from pandemic times until now. Two questions. First one was, does the I-ready student data, does it align with what you've seen from our New York State tests?
It's very close. It's very close. And the reason I say that, I-ready does not assess writing. There's no writing component. So as you know, on the New York State assessment, there's a writing component. And one of our focuses this year was writing because of that. If you rely solely on I-ready, you can't forget the writing component, and it weighs heavy on the assessments, the short, short responses and extended responses. So yes, it does. But that's why, if you saw the slide that I put up, we use different data points. We have to use the state assessment. We have to, we have to look at the short and extended response, how students are answering those questions. And I-ready does not do that.
Also, second question. Is there a tool in place? Because the particular school where my daughter attends, I also taught there. So our building leader was very adamant that we, that we worked with I-ready and we got our students to achieve and things like that. Is there a tool in place where buildings who, you know, they may, you know, they may be struggling? Is there something in place where building, the principals are talking with each other? They're exchanging strategies? You know, what's successful, what's not, things like that?
Yes, well, principals have their POCs. Sometimes, some principal meetings, there's carved out for work sessions where principal can share best practices. But that's something that we can assist schools with from the district level on how to get parents involved in I-ready. We've also had our first district-wide, based on what parents came up here and said last year and the year before, we've also had our I-ready parent workshop session held by the district. It wasn't well-attended, though.
Trustee Brown?
Good evening, Dr. Doggett. A great, great presentation. I think I have two questions. How can you ensure that the uniform curriculum is implemented throughout the district? Because I know there was some conversation about when you go into schools that they may not be doing the exact same thing as other buildings. So what is, measures in place to get that online?
Dr. Strickland spoke to it. We have to get in our buildings. We have to be in there. We have to monitor. We have to do more walkthroughs. We've conducted walkthroughs. We've had walkthroughs scheduled. But we need to be more intentional about our walkthroughs. And a walkthrough is, it's not, I got you. It's to see what's going on and how can we assist.
Okay, and go ahead.
I just wanted to further expand upon what Dr. Doggett is saying. One of the measures that I'm also taking, which I've done in a previous district, too often, it's a mentality of central office or district versus school. So what we will be doing is actually moving our meetings bi-weekly to actually be in the school buildings. And those meetings will actually be happening with the directors so that when we're in our meetings, we are going to do the business of the meeting. But also, I'm going to be providing tools, which I'm going to have the directors look at so that when they are in those buildings, they're going into the classrooms and they're actually seeing if what it is that they've mapped out in the curriculum is actually acquiescing in the classroom. And too often, that doesn't happen. If you meet here, odds are, we're going to stay here. So what I'm going to do is, we are all, and it doesn't matter all, we are going there. And it forces us to be in the school and to know what's going on firsthand with the curriculum. So we can't just say, that's not happening. We actually have proof. And then, we start actually working with our principals and our teachers on ensuring that we're monitoring appropriately for the use of the correct curriculum.
And just to further expand just on something that I'm aware of because it just popped in my head when Dr. Strickland was talking. We also monitor the curriculum. But the biggest challenge from what I see is not curriculum incompletion, not getting to the full curriculum. So if students don't get to the full curriculum, they don't have a chance. So if you got through 50% of your curriculum and the other 50% is going to be on the test, how are you going to do well if you didn't get, if you didn't get to it? So a lot of our PD is built around scaffolding and how to get to the curriculum, how to condense and combine lessons. So a lot of our PD is built around scaffolding and how to get to the curriculum, how to condense and combine lessons. So that, to me, is a, a, a bigger issue than veering off, which we do. Have some people that go rogue. We know that. I had that in my building when I was a principal, and sometimes it works in your favor. But again, not completing the curriculums, particularly in math, because if you don't get to, you don't understand, if you can read, and you don't get to specific units of study, you still can read. But if you weren't exposed to geometry, because you didn't get to it, and it happened in May, and it's, and it's, and it's March, and it's on the test, you were never exposed to it. So we have to give our students the exposure. To me, based where I'm at, based on the data I collect, that's what we see.
Okay, and so my follow-up would be, with this curriculum, will you be able to entertain some parent engagement to help assist parents? Because I'm a child, um, a parent, um, of a fifth grader, and while I may play engineer from my nine to five, when she comes home with her math, the way that the teacher is teaching it, I wanna follow that same notion so that I can help her, because I will show her my method, and she'll say, "No, Mom, that's not how I, that's not how I was taught." So is there a way that we can bring families in? Because I'm not just me, you know, there's other family members that are helping assist these children, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and so it would be nice for them to be able to have something to follow to assist their children if they're not going to an after-school program that helps them there.
Yes, we're actually in the planning stages of next school year, and what you said is exactly what, um, Dr. Strickland mentioned in June when he was here, actually talking about having a parent university, um, where we could explain these strategies, like you said, specifically in math. Um, so that's something that we're looking to plan for next year. And I just wanna just congratulate, and can we please thank our teachers for the hard work that they've been doing and the outcomes that they, that they've been giving us? Let's give them a round of applause. They've really been doing what they have to do to close the achievement gap, so we really have to thank our teaching staff and our administrators for leading this work. Shout out to them.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you so much, Dr. Doggett. Uh, trustee Scott.
Thank you very much. I wanna go back to something that you said, Dr. Strickland, in regards to going into the schools and doing the monitoring, and I guess discussing things with the, um, professionals there. Do you have a specific tool that you're gonna use, um, in order to do that monitoring? And if you do, is that something that we can see? And if you don't, is that something that you will develop?
Um, so I actually do have a tool, believe it or not. Um, in my previous district, uh, same, same issues that plague districts around the country. Um, there's a consistent, uh, again, stigma, you're in central office, I'm in the building, you want me to do what you wanna do, but you don't know what's going on here. So what I've done was, actually, um, I had an intern, amen, um, had an intern, and I told, uh, I asked her to think about everyone's position. That's all the way from the superintendent, all the way to the human resources, uh, person. And what we did was, there were elements of leadership, um, in our areas that we were looking for. So often, you will hear a principal cry out, "I don't have enough support. I don't have enough help." So the HR individual was going in there, looking, how, how are the teachers, um, are, are they certificated? Um, how are they, how are we recruiting? Who are we recruiting? Um, excuse me. Um, they were looking at those components to see if their work was being effective firsthand. Um, the curriculum, the chief of schools, their, their responsibility was around principal leadership, as well as the superintendent, who sort of looks at everything as a whole. How is the principal managing the building? Do people know the principal? Do people, is the principal have data available? Is, are there systems in place that are making that school run effectively? The business official or the operations, they're going in. I remember going in, um, for one of our visits, the elevator is broke. So guess what I did? Why is the elevator broke? You know what I mean? Because, because that elevator was broke, a student actually could not go to class who was wheelchair-bound. So you see how all of the responsibilities go directly or affect student outcomes. And I needed my cabinet, and I will do the same with this cabinet, to understand how the things we do up here affect what happens down there. And that's, um, so yes, in short, I do have a tool. Um, it will be a tool that I give to each individual to say, "Hey, beat this up," because everything I bring is not perfect. And then that way, we have a shared understanding as to what we're looking for when we go in these buildings.
Trustee Middleton.
Dr. Strickland, do you have, um, do you have a mentoring program aligned for those, uh, teachers that do come in and they don't know how? Not 100%, but they need, 'cause that was something that we lacked, and so sometimes they would get beat up for what they didn't really know.
Yes, yes.
So do you have a mentoring, uh, program or someone who would be present with those who need to move forward effectively?
Yes, trustee Middleton, um, I've been, uh, looking still at the data and the resources. Uh, I came from a district with a strong, um, mentoring program, and I believe that we can find ways to create elements of that mentoring program right here within our schools. I know that every school has highly qualified individuals that would take on leadership roles and, and some of them do informal mentoring, uh, in our schools. Um, but I will try to implement those items, uh, and be fiscally responsible, if possible, uh, so that we get those things done. But some of that work, actually, as a former principal, is with the principal. As a principal, you are the instructional leader for the building, and you set the tone for what's happening instructionally in your building. So when you talk about mentorship program, me as a principal, I'm pairing up teacher A, who's been there for a while, with teacher B, who's brand-new. And they have, that's something informal and doesn't cause much of this. Um, i- i- if we create those situations, those scenarios, we'll be good. And myself, Dr. Doggett, and the executive team, we are going to actually plan a, a year-long professional development plan, so we actually make sure, we integrate those pieces, uh, that I found from being up here today, because I'm already getting great ideas, just talking about what needs to happen in our schools. And also, the work sess, I mean, the sessions that I've done, the Let's Talk sessions, as well as the district climate survey. So those are the things that will be interwoven, so that we actually see that, uh, those little holes of where we don't have, get filled.
Trustee McDonough.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. So, two questions. Uh, the first one, and, and the way I, I saw it, it looked like this. It looked like with the ELA, the, uh, comprehension and vocabulary is a little more stubborn in terms of bringing change about than the tool skills, the phonological awareness, the phonics, and the high-frequency words. That's the way the graph looked like to me, that it's, the gains are coming more slowly there. And that, in some respect, would make sense, because those are pure language tasks. You, you don't need to know phonics to have a vocabulary or comprehension. They're independent. So I'm just curious about your thinking there and how, how you're going, because that's where the game really is, if you can get that. I, of course, go back to early childhood. I, I think of, you know, our, our toddlers, our three-year-olds, our four-year-olds, and the importance of developing comprehension skills there. Stress is a factor in the development of, of comprehension skills. So I just wanted you to talk a little bit philosophically, conceptually about that, and if I'm reading it correctly.
You're, you're, you're absolutely reading it correctly, 'cause we're still drilling down and looking at the data. But one of our instructional focus is gonna be, is gonna be on vocabulary, based on what the needs are saying. We did a, a lot of work around, um, phonics and phonemic awareness. Uh, we did some work this year. We moved into year two of our writing. Doesn't mean we're not doing vocabulary. Doesn't mean we're not doing, um, literature, um, and not, and, if not, oh, non-informational texts. That doesn't mean that, but we can't focus on everything. So vocabulary is a focus. I'm also gonna tell you why vocabulary is not where it should be, based on the information that we've been receiving, which also ties back into the curriculum. A lot of the social studies and science content is not being taught. And that's where you get the content-specific vocabulary to bring up our vocabulary, and that's a time issue.
Got it.
So one of the things that, um, trustee Mitchell had mentioned about the science, some of the science gets pushed to the side specifically at the elementary level, because you have to do so much work with ELA, because you have to do so much work with math. We'll get to science later. Or you start panicking, because you have to do test prep. The test is coming. There's no science test, so I'm gonna put science to the side. But what do you do? You impact the grade-eight science, because you put that to the side. So one of the things that we're gonna focus on and be intentional about is the time of teaching science.
Thank you, thank you. One, one, uh, is this still on? One additional question, uh, regarding the achievement goals. I, I understand that currently you have two, three, and four bundled together, even though three and four are proficiency. I, that makes sense to me, given where you're coming from, moving that. What is your thought about, or when do you expect to change the goal where your focus is entirely on pulling people into three and four? So two isn't bundled with three and four, but...
Once we start reaching that goal, 'cause the goal was ambitious at the time, but we're approaching it. So once we see that we're approaching the goal, we'll definitely change the goal. It's not gonna stay like that forever. But we had to get out of the danger zone, and some, in some instances, we start, we still are in the danger zone. We have a lot of students that are below grade level. So once we move that out, once we take care of that, we're gonna reset our goals.
And so with the, the APPR plan, so...
That helped us.
Right, well, and the two, right, it does help that with the two in there, but you, you, I'm, I'm sure you differentiate.
Yes.
This, this, I, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we, we want 75% of our students in levels two, three, and four, because we get points for students of level two. But we have a distinction, because we still wanna have higher proficiency rates. I think that's what you're saying. So if you, I don't have the presentation, if you look at it, we have a 3% increase that we looked, incremental increase that we want every year of proficiency. Per, per subgroup. Yes, we have it. But we will change that goal, because we are approaching that goal. So we're gonna have to look at when the data comes in, and we're gonna have to set some new goals.
That's good news.
Yes. It's a good problem to have.
Trustee White, do you have any questions? I don't wanna forget you. Does anyone else have any other questions? Uh, VP Mitchell?
Um, I'm, I'm actually piggybacking on, uh, trustee Scott's question about mentoring teachers. I think that's what, that was part of it.
Yes.
Are we having mentoring for principals? We're trying to tear the walls off of silos. Each, and the silos, well, from a school district point of view, the silos are called our school buildings. A lot of times, there's the, the understanding, a, a building is being run by a person who insists that everything is handled internally, according to them. They don't want anybody talking to anyone. How, how do we deal with, are we going to have mentoring for our principals? I know you guys are gonna be going in buildings. Um, are we gonna be listening to what the teachers and the workers have to say as well? Is that part of what your in, onsite walkthroughs are gonna be consistent of? That's actually more of a question for, for Dr. Strickland.
No, that's, that's a fantastic question. Um, my biggest, uh, focus in any district that I've been at, the ones that have been most successful have made sure that principals have been paramount. If you feed the principals, they feed the teachers. And if you feed the teachers, they don't eat the students. And I've said that in a few of my, um, work sessions. So we need to make sure that the principals are being fed, and that's through mentorship. Um, I, I think, you know, Mr. Doggett, uh, Dr. Doggett, excuse me, uh, Mr. Ramandi has some building leadership experience, but when there's not the building-level leadership experience in the cabinet, that doesn't necessarily transfer to what's happening in the classroom. And no, you know, no disrespect to anyone, but one of the things that I know to do is how to be a principal. And bringing those outside ideas, it's gonna be already a, a somewhat of a shock in some cases, but, um, the data won't lie, and we're always gonna have to be an organization that's pushing towards getting to our, our student outcomes where they need to be, and it begins with actually the leader of the building, and that's the principal.
And I guess, I, okay. Trustee Peterson?
Thank you, President Rambo. Just a quick question. Yes, you're correct. I'm the daughter of a principal, and you are absolutely correct. Um, Dr. Doggett, you mentioned, um, about, and it's so correct, about teachers not being able to fully teach through the science, you know, 'cause we're trying to, they were, we, they were, you know, doing the ELA part of it. Have we looked at, because that is very true, and I can recall rushing through the science lesson, because, A, we didn't have time for it, because we were so, you know, into ELA math, things like that. Have we looked into going back to a more traditional science curriculum, where we, like, you know, K through five? At least I know, I did second grade for two years. There were five different textbooks for, you know, for the school year.
Yes.
And many teachers aren't getting past the second or third one. So have we looked at going back to a more traditional, yet successful evidence-based, that we know that's a successful science, uh, program?
Yes, um, one of the things we're gonna be looking at, the Discovery Ed, was what we're currently using. We're gonna be looking at that. I believe that's expiring soon. Um, what, I think what we have to do is streamline as well. Take out, and I believe Dr. Jack Nana has done some of this work, um, pick out the priority experiments, the hands-on lessons that must be done. And we, we're also gonna look at the schedule to make sure that they're intentional about teaching science. I think that is the, we have to, if we can start there, and maybe see some outcomes increase from making sure that science is being taught with fidelity. But again, it goes back to streamlining. It also goes back to some of the things that we're gonna be doing with ELA and some of the resolutions coming up. Streamlining to make ELA a little bit easier, math a little bit easier, streamline that, so we can get to the science and social studies.
Any other?
Yep, I just wanted to also...
Okay, Dr. Strickland, you wanted to comment?
Yes, please. Uh, trustee Peterson, also to, uh, uh, to jump on what Dr. Doggett is saying. One of the first memos that I sent to the principals is that I am giving the green flag on departmentalization. I do not want students in one classroom all day. And one of the ways that you can actually ensure that science and social studies are actually getting taught is if you have a person that is a specialist, that is focused on science. They're gonna raise all kinds of, you know what, if they don't get their babies to teach the science. We have to make sure that we start structuring the schedule so that you have to, and it's not, uh, "if we." Um, and too often, when you have the, the children with you all day, it lends or leaves room for you teaching ELA all day, because the, they are not reading yet. When, you know, you, you're missing out on that student that needs something hands-on, where they actually will be able to learn how to read because of what they're learning in science, and that's their favorite subject. So we, um, we, I, I've already encouraged it. Um, I said, uh, I told principals, sixth grade, um, I really want you to do it in sixth grade, and that'll help them get ready for middle school. And then we are moving towards it being mandatory for 26, 27. And then, um, I, I did already also give the green light from grades three all the way up to six.
Any other questions? Actually, that was going to be my question. Have you thought about departmentalizing, starting with grades three? And that way, you ensure that there is reading and writing across the curriculum, and that all subject matters actually get tackled, um, on a given day. So, thank you very much. I also would like one other question. Have you seen a trend that there are certain buildings that are struggling more than others in terms of making sure that they are, um, identifying those groups of students that are, why they're struggling, and whether or not they are completing, uh, the pacing guides?
Um, we're actually looking at that data now. I'm trying to close out this school year. Um, we have the iReady data. I'm gonna look, take our iReady data, look at the special ed outcomes, look at the, um, E&amp;L outcomes, and we're gonna like, we're gonna look at individual buildings to see that. We have that information.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Doggett, for that presentation. That was exhaustive, but critical. Thank you. You can do that. Uh, trustee Mitchell has an announcement. Also, I'd like to, uh, notify the public that we have started back on Facebook Live. There will be no comments on Facebook, but we are streaming on Facebook as well as our other platforms. So we are trying to make sure that we communicate through all vehicles where our community is, um, is actually watching. So just wanted to let you know that we're doing that, and then trustee Mitchell has a, um, an announcement as well for some other information to make sure that you are well-informed.
So, in the, in the vein of communication a- a- and bringing actual transparency as a thing you can see and touch, we have, we're going to be getting, printing out the agendas and making them available to our guests who are here in the district building on, uh, nights that we're having working sessions and on nights that we're having, uh, resolution votes, so that the public can follow along with the agenda items that are, uh, on deck for that evening. There's not, the, uh, there's no, the attachments are not there, because we just don't have that many trees to destroy. Um, but at least you could kind of follow along, because it's not easy for everyone to look at that screen from wherever you're sitting, or even at home. So, um, we're, we're gonna work to have these available, uh, at least a few. If we start seeing more people show up, we'll, of course, update the volume to make sure it's available. And I'd love, we'd love some feedback on this initiative. Do you like it? Do you love it? Do you hate it? Is it not enough? We'd love to hear from you all. Thank you.
Yes, and I think that trustee Mitchell, um, spearheaded that, because we were concerned about our seniors. Um, when they come in, they may not necessarily have access to technology, so we wanna ensure that they have documents. So we are preparing them for, mainly for our seniors and, um, maybe, um, individuals that, that don't have access to technology. So we will be limited with the copies, but we do wanna make sure that they are available for you to be able to follow along with us. Okay, thank you.
So we're gonna, we're gonna move along to our resolutions for a discussion. Um, the first one we have is our, um, human resources certified tab. It's up on the screen, and you guys should, if you'd like, on your laptops, and we'll just go through.
I just have one question, and I think I've shared this with Dr. Strickland already. We are missing some critical tabs, uh, critical backup for some of the items that are listed on this particular resolution. So, um, just wanna ensure that we have that information before we move forward.
You absolutely will have that information. Uh, most of that information that you will need will be actually, uh, put into the executive, uh, session, uh, excuse me, executive segment of board docs, uh, as it is confidential only to you all. Um, but I've already made a connection with, um, Mr. Campbell, and we will ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Are there, are there any other questions on 4.1, human resources certified? Any other comments? We can move to 4.2. Any questions on human resources, 131B classified, 4.2? Any questions or concerns, discussions? Hearing none, we'll move on to 4.3. Are there any questions, concerns on 4.3, requests for leave of absence?
So, so in the past, um, I don't know if anybody's been noticing, but at a, for a certain amount of time, leaves of absence were ha, were happening. And there is an act, there's an actual board policy, a district policy, that says the board approves leaves of absence. So if you wanna know, is anybody, we sleep at the wheel, and we're just approving things. We're not. Uh, we called it out several months ago, and, um, the documentation has to be submitted, and the board actually does approve leaves of absence, including FMLA. Just wanted, that's just me just speaking in turn, so that everybody who's listening does know. It's not just decided by one or two people. It is decided in whole with backup and, uh, information.
And also, as it relates to the, um, items in human resources, we're gonna be looking at the restructuring of those items, so that we have them, they're clear. Okay?
All right, we're gonna move on to 5.1. For the comprehensive education plan.
Is it?
For all schools?
Yeah, this is...
As you'll see on the screen, we have authorization to approve the school comprehensive education plans for all schools for 2025, 2026. So we're gonna stay here for a moment to, if there are any questions, any comments, any concerns or discussion?
Uh, comment, I can say I did read through each school's plan. Um, I also was just wondering, as I was reading through them, these are yearly plans. Um, I also was just wondering, as I was reading through them, these are yearly plans, correct? They do them yearly. Two, I was just interested in seeing like the prior year before to make sure it wasn't like a cut and paste type of thing going on. But a lot of the schools, they did look very, you, no, go on, you want to say? Is it on? Oh, no, no, a lot of the schools, that's all right. A lot of the schools did, you know, I, I read through them and a lot of the information was, it was, it was, it was good. It was meaningful. I just was like, oh, I just, I wonder what last year said, just so I can make sure it's not a cut and paste thing. Cause I'm one of those. I do go on New York State and read the school report cards. I'm a nerd like that. So I do like to just make sure that, you know, that it, what they're putting into their plans is genuine. And then something that, so the next summer I can look back and say, oh, you know.
Yes, well, a lot of the plans comes from data. So a lot of the data sometimes is repetitive. It's the same kind of themes that come up all the time that emerge. But for this particular school year, it's a whole entire different form. So you cannot cut and paste. Certain themes that you can take, but it's a whole new way of how they create the plan, which was done this year. So it's not the same document where they can cut and paste and refine. In some instances, they may do that based on the data that emerges. So if your plan is working, you may not change everything. You just may refine a specific area. So.
That's perfect. Thank you, Dr. Doggett.
I would like to know the structure of how the, the building puts together the plan. Is there a collaborative effort between all the stakeholders in the building? Um, has there been some type of training that has been done in order for them to complete the plan? Uh, what was the process in them actually working on this?
Well, we had a meeting with them, um, with all the schools to tell them what the plan was like with the expectation where, there's also some information on the website that shows them how to outline and actually create the plan. They have experience creating the plan. So basically if you go on the website, New York State website, it gives them some information on how to put the plan together step by step. And they work, the principal leads that work and how they create, do it in a building. Everybody probably does it differently. They may give somebody a specific priority to work on and they come back and give the information and the whole team approves it.
Do they get, do they get overtime? Do they work on it during the school day? Do they work on it during their PLCs?
After school.
After school, so they get.
They get, I believe it's 18 hours each.
18 hour, okay, thank you.
So, so I will say, um, that with this plan, while I didn't get to work on it this year because I was running a campaign, last year, the, um, building principal made it a point to include the PTA president. And then I brought in other PTA members to make sure we sat on this plan to help, um, implement it for the particular building. And it was interesting to me because I didn't know where it went. And so now in this role, in my purview, now I get to see where it goes and it's, I'm excited that all of that worked and time that we spent um, in person and through Zoom as I was driving from work home, um, that it's going somewhere and that it is being used. Um, so I'm excited about that. So thank you for that.
Trustee Mitchell?
That's amazing. I, I love that. That's, well, standard, standardizing a process like that where the PTA is included, is that something we're looking aggressively at? Just what build, I'm sorry, Trustee Brown, what building were you in?
Nelson Mandela.
Okay, so if that is the practice at Mandela, can we see something like that across all the builders of the districts so that you, you get more, if you get, if you, if you build it and show it, people, more people will come look at it, right? Is this something that we can look towards standardizing the process where we include the PTA or is it something we're doing already?
I will have to look into that, but there is some parent involvement, but we don't have to mandate that it's a PTA president. It could be a parent. It can be parents, um, participated indirectly through the DTSDE surveys, the results from that as well. So that information is all taken into the needs assessment to create the plan. Because remember, the, the, the parents bring, um, an outside lens. Um, but the teachers are the experts in the buildings, but you want to bring both worlds together.
Okay.
Is, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Assigning a specific parent, like it has to be the PTA parent? No.
No, no, I don't mean like that. I'm just saying like, so that our, at the building level, we're in, our, our building leads in the district is aspiring to have parent involvement in this process. Or I just want to make sure we're doing.
Yes, we could recommend that.
Yeah.
I think he's really talking about replicating best practices so that we can ensure that everyone is involved in the process. So.
Yes.
Any other questions? On the comprehensive plan? Be ready to move forward. 5.2, authorization to hire staff for the K8 literacy planning committee during the 2025, 2026 school year. 5.2. Any questions, concerns, items for discussion? Okay, okay. 5.3, approval of nine to through 12 ELA plan. Research-based writing committee for the 2025, 2026 school year. Any questions, comments for discussion? Is this grant? Grant-based? Okay, so I was going to say, so during, on the, um, the description of the resolutions, can we just ensure that we note if they're grant? On what, in what line they're coming from in the budget?
Yeah, it was, it was, when we submitted it, I put the grant code F code F on there, but when I see these, it just says discussion. So I don't know if you.
It'll come back.
It'll come back? Okay, okay. Everything is grant funded except for 5.6.
Thank you, thank you. 5.4, authorization to hire staff for the No Place For Hate NPFH District Leadership. Questions, comments, concerns for discussion? We did hear public comment regarding this particular resolution?
Yes, Madam President.
Trustee McDonough?
So just, I, I read what Mr. Monroe sent via email and he spoke tonight about this. And it does raise interesting concerns. I know that No Place For Hate has become more or less a standard program. Um, and, you know, I do, I do think that there's validity to what, um, Mr. Monroe is saying. Um, and also it's possible for, for this program to be effective as well. But I, I think we ought to consider this and, and maybe we ought to look and see if there are other anti-bullying prevention programs. We also may want to, um, secure input from, from the union on this. Uh, since that was some of the literature he, he cited NEA, um, um, their position on this. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Doggett, would you like to weigh in? Are, are there options for alternative, um, looking at alternative places to, to utilize for this?
I will have to look into it.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Strickland, you have anything you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. 5.5, authorization to hire staff for the District Multi-Tierred System of Supports MTSS Team during the summer for the Mount Vernon City School District. Any questions, comments? Discussion?
Move on to 5.6.
Approval of additional summer work for CNI Director. Can you just share, Dr. Doggett, on what this is? This is standard or?
Well, for Dr. Satish Jagnana, this is, um, a practice that he's been doing for the past 10, 10 years, maybe 10 years or so, um, calculating the APPR composite score. So we have, and I presented in, in the actual presentation, goals that were set for the teachers and principals APPR, 50% of their evaluation comes from data. That data has to be disaggregated. A score has to be calculated for each individual teacher. Last year, um, it was done for teachers holistically. So it was what the district received. Each teacher received that score. This year is individual teacher. So he was going to have to go and calculate that information one by one. So that's why you see the additional days. Originally it was an additional 10. Um, last year it was reduced to five and Dr. Jagnana agreed to do the five. But with the additional individual teachers, it's going to take much more time for him to gather that data. Also, the data doesn't come in right away. So the, some of the preliminary, preliminary data will come in around mid-August and he has to do this work.
Does that include the staff that we, um, that were on the Pell list as well to be included in this data? Is that required as well?
I'm not sure.
I mean, no, if, if they were teaching and they made, um, if they were teaching in the district, yes, they're required to have a score as well. It doesn't matter if they're now on the Pell list or laid off. Cause if we, um, get to them and need to bring them back, I mean, they still have to have that data that's attached. I mean.
Thank you.
Correct. And, and also some of them, if they need jobs, some jobs require that they look at the APPR score. We want to make sure that they have their score.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Move on to 6.1.
6.1, approval of pupil personnel services memorandum number 02 dated July 29? 2025? Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Question, um, so.
Vice President Mitchell?
And, and this is looking at the dollars that, um, we're spending at charter schools. And this is, is this the only, this doesn't feel like it's the only time that we see this document come through. Is this the, is this the only time? No, it comes through again.
Every month, we, every, every, every time we have a meeting, we usually see.
Right. So, a- and it's not just, is, it's mainly, it's all, this is what we're paying all the charter schools. And I, I really feel like we should have, uh, that we need, our budget committee, I would like to see presentations that show us quarterly what we're spending on charter schools, um, something that we have never seen before. I'd like to just see it, have it presented to me. I don't care if it's on a spread, a slide, a spread, I don't care what it is. I just would like to know because when we're looking at these numbers, we're looking at, this is inspirational also for us. Charter schools are only coming in because it's a, it's an opportunity. Let's make sure we're clear.
Um, Dr. Strickland would like to comment.
Yes.
This is special ed, I believe, not charter.
Yes, uh, it is, um, more along of the lines of special education. So these are, um, things that just come up that we have to ensure that our money is, um, that we're funding the individuals that are in the charter schools. I did want to, um, say that, uh, moving forward, uh, what you will be hearing from our interim super, assistant superintendent for business is, uh, actual monthly presentation on the financials. Uh, so that you are exactly aware of what, um, money we have in the bank, what's the, uh, areas of, of, of celebration, areas of concern. And it's also to make the public aware of what it is, uh, that, where we are. But what you're saying, um, I, that's one thing I just added to my notes. Um, how do we pay, uh, for charter students, um, at, uh, the schools? Because we do know that there's some levels of transiguency between going back and forth from the district and back to a charter, so on and so forth. So that is one of my questions, uh, Mr. Raimandi, you could just write that down, uh, to get ready to tell me. Um, and I'm glad you brought that up. Thanks.
Question, question. Um, with these numbers that you have here, are these negotiable numbers? Are these, are contracted numbers for a certain number of years? How, can someone, um, educate me on how these numbers came to be?
They are, um, Dr. Strickland, would you like to answer? Cause.
Generally, these are the rates set forth by New York State Education Department and we're, we're bound to pay those amounts. Um, and that's, that's really all or how it is.
Yeah, cause I, I noticed it's two different numbers.
Yeah.
Based on what I see here. So that's why I was wondering if these are negotiable or can change.
So what I will do, cause I know exactly which one you're talking about. You're talking about number three, uh, the one says 19,022. I will get clarification on why that one, uh, is different than aligns two and four. Um, you know, and, um, it, it, so one is a money charter school. So there's, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still learning the charters in the area as well. It could be possible, uh, grade configurations and that, different, um, things of that nature. But I still want to get you the, the correct answer.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Can we move on to the business?
Business office, section seven. 7.1, approval to increase the 2024, 2025 general budget by $2 million.
Question.
Questions, comment? Okay. Uh, Vice President Mitchell, let, let me, um, let Trustee Middleton, I'll let you go first. Okay. Okay, I think that's probably everybody's question.
So if I may.
Trustee Peterson?
If I may add into this, um, since I also sit on the, um, Mount Vernon City's, um, comprehensive plan, uh, committee. This is, this $2 million is coming from part of, cause you know, and I know Trustee McDonough, he attends the, um, he's our member who attends the IDA meetings, um, uh, for the city. This $2 million is coming from a project that did have a pilot, but part of their pilot agreement was that they would have to give $2 million at closing to the school district. And I do believe there are some other monies that will be coming along as well also. So like, cause that was first, I was like, whoa, $2 million for last year.
Right.
But then that's what, um, that's what that is.
Right. I know, I know that, uh, Trustee McDonough has been, um, talking about this for quite a while in terms, and we've been waiting for the money. I just think that, um, the question is how it's allocated and increasing the budget. So if Dr. So wait a minute, I want to make sure that Trustee Mitchell's question is answered first. No, we're going to let Dr. Strickland go and then.
I just, I just wanted to get that clarity right there because I saw $2 million and I immediately grabbed the vodka. So I'm, I'm glad that you just said what you said.
Right.
It's non-alcoholic vodka.
Right, okay, so.
And I know we've been listening to Trustee McDonough tell us about this coming too. So here we are.
So, um, Dr. Strickland, if you can just explain how this actually affects, impacts the budget?
Yes.
And, um, explain exactly how that will look and if.
Absolutely. So I'm going to allow Mr. Raimandi to explain about the appropriations of the $2 million. Um, but I do believe it is to close a budget deficit, um, that, uh, is being forecasted already from last year's budget. Um, and we'll be giving you more information to come, uh, regarding that. However, anytime you receive any funds from any entity from the outside, whether it be large, you're, you're obligated to actually, um, change your budget, um, your total bullet, budget allocation, uh, regardless. Like, and it's just, it makes sure, it, it's our way of making sure that our budget is accurate and it involves all of the funds that are regarding, uh, this actual year. So we must do this by law. If we were to get $4 million tomorrow, guess what? We'll be bringing you another tab or resolution, increasing that, uh, by $4 million more dollars. Uh, we have to be accurate in what our actual budgeted amount is, um, and, and for transparency for you all and the public. And did you, did you want to talk to appropriations? Oh, well, talking to, talking to the mic.
So you hit the nail on the head. Uh, when you, this school district receives unanticipated revenue, we have to reconcile now. It adjusts to our budget. So this was $2 million of revenue we did not anticipate receiving. So if our budget was 271 million, uh, with revenue, now it's 273 million. So you have to balance that out.
My question would be, um, I know Dr. Strickland spoke to, um, that the funds are coming in and we have to increase the budget by the $2 million. But I also heard him say it was going out. So I want to know what that looks like, only because we know that we are, we would love to have put that money towards a fund balance, but it doesn't look like that's going, we're going to have an opportunity to do that. So can you please elaborate?
Sure. So looking at the closing of our books, there is a pretty significant deficit in our budget. Now, we haven't reconciled it wholly because we're still looking at different funds coming in, applying onto an unanticipated revenue, grant resources, reducing and zeroing out our purchase orders, our encumbrances. So once we get an idea of what our true expenses and our true revenues are, then we'll see exactly where we sit. Do we break even? Are we in a deficit or are we in a surplus? And if we're in a surplus, then that would be applied to fund balance, um, unassigned fund balance. However, we're not there yet. We're still going through those books because it's, it's a very labor-intensive, granular procedure. And a lot of times, the money won't come in, uh, exactly on June 30th for us to reconcile. For instance, tax payments, we received the tax payments for the 24, 25 school year, but we won't reconcile them until probably. for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but we won't reconcile them until probably the end of the month because money is rolling in when the tax bills come. So, those are things that they're procedural and will give us a better interpretation. And that's when our external auditors come in. And then they'll look at our books and look at our findings for the last year, and then they'll cite their recommendations.
I just wanted to further elaborate on what Mr. Raimandi said. He's absolutely correct in that we, you know, closing out the books, this is happening across districts. But one of the reasons why we have this deficit or this, is the under-appropriated amount for transportation. I've already started digging deep into the budget. We've, we did not allocate or appropriate the amount of funds for transportation versus what it actually costed, costed at the end of the year. So, that is one of the largest steps that we're going to have to look at. How are we going to bring down, or strategies to bring down the cost of our transportation so that we can be more financially stable?
I'm glad you pointed that out because it's almost exactly that amount, which was the transportation.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I know we did a transportation study, so we were trying to look at the routes for transportation. We, yeah. So, I would love to know where we, what the status is of that report. Because we, I know that they were looking at changing the routes for the fall, identifying where some, putting students in their prospective schools, making sure there were programs so that they would be curb to, you know, curb to curb, or, I don't know. So, I'm not sure where we are with that. We did, Bosie's, I believe, was working on that. So, where are we? And is that complete?
It's nearing the end of completion. We'll have the final numbers once all the special education students are placed in their buildings, because that is the ultimate determination. But in our preliminary work, we're putting sections throughout the district that will be very advantageous to reduce our routes and provide more efficient transportation. So, once all the special ed students are placed with the classing, I can give you an update for the next meeting as well, where we are and how far along we are.
I do, I also have something to add. So, we just sort of straightened out the special education continuum, where we have special education programs mirror each other, one on the north side, and then there's one on the south side. That will actually help reduce the amount of routes that are needed to get students to schools. We also, I'm happy to say, I did meet with the director of pupil personnel services, and she is currently going through individualized education plans to determine who really should be getting transportation. Students that we are liable for or should be providing transportation for is really based off of cognitive abilities and physical disabilities. So, we, and I'm hearing we're, if you have an IEP, you're getting transportation, and we cannot afford that as a district. And just because you have an IEP does not mean you cannot walk to school.
That's right.
So, we have to really do a clean, cleaning of our individual, individualized education plans so that we can generate some more efficiencies in transportation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Strickland. I know we've talked about that, and it's been promised. And I thank you so much for making sure that, that that happens, because hopefully that will reduce our transportation costs. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on that? Resolution?
We're going to move on to seven point two.
Seven point two, approves the settlement of tax proceedings for Mount, for Vernon Woods Apartments, Inc. Any questions or comments on that? If we can just ask Dr. Strickland for an explanation of what these settlement tax proceedings are and in letting the public know that they are mandatory, that they really are not optional. So, if we could just share with the public to.
So, I'm not good at this yet. This is, this is unique. But I do want, Mr. Raimandi, can you please shed light on these items? Generally, this did not come to superintendents in big five districts. So, Mr. Raimandi, go ahead.
So, these are just settlements in the courts that any tax entity, like a school district or municipality, once a ruling is given, we now have to abide by. So, this is the tail end after it's gone through all the legal. Now, that entity approves the settlement. So, that's, that's what this is.
Thank you. Any questions?
We're going to go on to the next one, seven point three.
Seven point three, approves the settlement of tax proceedings for Grandview Park Associates, LLC, which is the same explanation, correct? Any questions?
So, our next item is eight point one, authorization to send items to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
First, are there any, any question?
So, I just want to, just so that we're clear, because this is the first time I'm ever, I mean, I'm, am I, have we ever, I've never seen this ever in all my lifetimes, and items to consent the gender resolution. And can we just have a simple explanation? I think I, I'm pretty sure, I do know what it is, but can we just announce it to the public what it is?
So, what we want to do is really streamline the focus of the business meeting. The reason why we have the work sessions are to have these open and honest dialogues about the resolutions that are put before you. So that when they are then sent to the board work session in a consent agenda, you are simply voting on all of the resolutions. If you, if you are not wanting to see one resolution go forward, you would say, yes, minus tab one point two, or what have you. And basically, it really helps us focus the work that we need to do on the teaching and learning. But that's why we went through each and every single one of them. So, every single one of you are aware, the public is aware. Now, one of the things that I am making sure that we do, and I take copious notes, is to the questions that were asked, we find a way to get you the answers so that you're comfortable with approving these agenda items. It just makes the work more clear, streamlined, and more efficient. And then, I can get to bed at eight-thirty, even though work sessions, I do know will be longer. They should be longer than a board business meeting. So, it's just really to make us more efficient.
All right. So, can I have a motion, please, to send items to consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Trustee White, are you?
Trustee White?
Do we have some, a tech person monitoring the, I know, but do we have a tech person monitoring our virtual attendee? Thank you, Mike.
I, I was, I didn't hear what you asked, man. But I was kicked off one day. I don't know. My computer does its own thing.
Trustee White, can you hear me?
What did you?
We, we have a motion on the floor to send all of the items to the consent agenda, the resolutions that we just did, to send them to the consent agenda. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So, we have a few resolutions. Nine point one, can I have a motion, please? Authorization to appoint Dr. Kimberly Young Wilkins, state monitor to the Mount Vernon City School District. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you so much for that. We actually have our state monitor, Dr. Kimberly Young Wilkins, who is with us tonight. If she wouldn't mind, if she would just stand up and if she would like to address the audience, we would, the board trustees, and we are, we would like to give you that opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Vice President, and honorable trustees and our public. Thank you so much. I'm honored to have this position. I was on the other side two years ago as a deputy commissioner for the state of New York. It's a pleasure to be inside the district. I want to really talk about, really quickly, working with not just the trustees and the superintendent, but also the administration, the teachers, the children, but most importantly, parents, community, and the students. Because this is about your plan and what goes on for your district. And as I was telling Dr. Strickland earlier today, it warms my heart to talk about instruction, students, and learning. Because that's why we're all here. That's why you send your children to the school district. So, that's going to be my matre moving forward. The first thing I have to do, unfortunately, or fortunately, I have to have three open public hearings. So, we're going to talk about that at some point. And it has to be within the sixty days of July first. Even though I'm getting on today, it goes back to July first. By September first, we have to have three meetings. The first meeting is to talk about the monitor and the laws of that. The second meeting is about the academics and sustainability, sustainability of the academic plan, and then the fiscal. So, just kind of remind everybody, that's going to be the next three meetings, and we'll work about the scheduling of doing that. So, more to come. And I'm just honored to be here. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Moving on to nine point two, can I have a motion, please? Appointment of an impartial hearing officer for case number six-five-five-two-five-eight. Can. Pass me a motion. That's fine. Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion, please, for nine point three? Authorize an employment agreement between the Mount Vernon City School District and Luanne White as assistant superintendent of pupil personnel services. Can I have a motion, please?
So, moved.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
And again, we have the doctor, Ms., Ms. Laquan, Luanne, Luanne White. She is in the room, and we would like to know if you would like to address our trustees as well as our community. Thank you. And welcome.
Familiar faces. Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Vice President, trustees, Mount Vernon City community. I'm honored and humbled, and I want to assure you my commitment to all students in the Mount Vernon City School District. My priority will always be to advocate for the well-being of our students, and I am eager to collaborate with the board, staff, families, and the community to continue to build our school district that truly serves the diverse needs of each and every one of our students. So, I just want to say thank you, and I'm humbled and grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Welcome to the Mount Vernon family.
We're going to move on to our readings. Ten point one, can I have a motion, please, for the first reading of Board of Education Policy Number One Two Four Zero, resignation and dismissal. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion carries for the first reading of Policy One Two Four Zero.
What a night. Here we go. Board members' resignation, removal, and vacancy procedures, twelve forty. A board member may resign during the district meeting of residents, such as the annual meeting, not a regular Board of Education meeting, or by submitting a written resignation to the district superintendent of supervisory district. The superintendent must approve and endorse the resignation and file it with the district's clerk. Alternatively, a board member may resign under Public Officers Law Section Thirty-One by submitting a written resignation directly to the district clerk, who must then notify both the school board and the state of Board of Elections. A resignation may only be withdrawn with the consent of the individual to whom it was submitted, either the district clerk or Bosie's district superintendent. The Board of Education does not have the authority to act or request for resignation withdrawal. A resignation will take effect on the date specified in the resignation letter. If no date is specified, the resignation takes effect on the date it is delivered, delivered to or filed with the district clerk. If a date is specified, it may not be more than thirty days after the resignation is filed or delivered. Excuse me. Upon resignation or withdrawal, the board member is prohibited from applying for employment or contracting as a vendor with the district for the remainder of their term and for additional six months thereafter. Attendance and vacancy due to non-attendance, that's the next paragraph. Each board member has the duty to attend all meetings. If a member refuses to attend three consecutive meetings after being properly notified and fails to provide a satisfactory explanation for each absence, the board may declare the office vacant. Board member removal. A board member may be removed from office by the Commission of Education or willful violation of law, neglect of duty, willful disobedience of any decision, order, or regulation issued by the commissioner. Additionally, the Board of Education may remove a member for misconduct related to their role. If the board considers removal, a written statement of the charges must be served on the board member at least ten days before the hearing. The board member will be given a full and fair opportunity to respond to the charges before any decision is made. Upon dismissal or removal, the board member is precluded from seeking a board of trustees positioned for three years after the last date of the board's member term. Filing a board, filling a board vacancy. A small city school district, the district is not required to fill a board vacancy resulting from death, resignation, removal, or refusal to serve. However, the board may choose to file the vacancy by appointment for a term that ends at the next annual election, at which time a new member will be elected to complete the unexpired term. To make an appointment, a majority vote of the remaining board members is required. Alternatively, the board may call a special, special election within ninety days to file the vacancy for the unexpired term. If the vacancy is not filled by appointment or election, the district superintendent or the supervisor district may appoint a competent individual to serve until the next annual election. A person elected or appointed to fill a vacancy will assume office immediately upon filing the oath of office. That is twelve forty.
We're going to move on to ten point one, first reading, Board of Education Policy One Three One Zero, powers and duties of the board. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Just give me one second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries for the first reading.
Sorry for the delay. I'm just making sure the computer, what I have on the computer is matching what I have in front of me. So, powers and duties of the board, thirteen ten. Small city school district, Board of Election, powers and duties overview. A small city school district, Comer, the Board of Education, shall exercise its powers and duties as defined in the New York State Education Law, primarily under Articles Thirty-Three, Thirty-Five, Thirty-Seven, Fifty-One, and Fifty-Three, along with all relevant federal and state laws and regulations. In general, the board is responsible for the overall supervision, management. In general, the board is responsible for the overall supervision, management, and control of the district's educational affairs, and is vested with all the powers necessary to execute these responsibilities as granted by the New York State Law and the Commission of Education. Board Member Roles and Authority Overview. One, Policy and Leadership. The board serves as the policy-setting body, responsible for hiring and overseeing the superintendent. The board delegates the administration of schools to the superintendent. Two, Oversight Responsibility. The board is tasked with financial and legal oversight of the district, ensuring that the district's education objectives are being met. Three, Authority and Individual Roles. Board members derive authority only in their collective capacity as part of a corporate board. Individual board members do not possess authority to act independently of the board's decision. When interacting with the public in their roles as a board member, members should exercise caution and distinguish their personal opinions or opinions as a parent from official stance of the board. Four, Goal Setting. The board collaborates with the superintendent to establish annual goals for the district. Five, Superintendent Evaluation. The board evaluates the superintendent's performance semi-annually. Six, Internal Board Goals. The board sets specific goals for its own internal operations each year, which are separate from the district goals. Seven is Self-Evaluation. The board conducts an annual self-evaluation adhering to best practice standards and to ensure high performance and accountability for the board member and the board. Eight, Decision-Making Process. The board aims to make decisions by consensus whenever possible, though some decisions may require a majority vote after a thorough and reasonable discussion, period. Nine, Binding Decisions. Once a decision is made by the board, it is binding on all members. Ten, Board Presence in the Community. The board member should maintain a visible presence at schools and community events. The board president and board members will agree on designated visit schools. The visiting board member in advance should notify the superintendent or designee and the visiting school's principal or designee of the proposed visit date. The principal will assign an escort during the visit. However, board members are to avoid visiting schools as a trustee where there are direct family relationships to prevent any appearance of nepotism unless attending a special event. Eleven, Approval or Oversight Responsibilities. The board must approve budgets, bonds for voter approval, policies, hiring, and tenure decisions, collective bargaining agreements, contracts, special education services, and litigation matters. Twelve, Access to Information. The superintendent or their designee must provide the board with all necessary documentation before any decision is made. Thirteen, District Clerk's Evaluation. The board evaluates the district clerk's performance annually. Board Members' Rights and Responsibilities. One, Supporting Board Decisions. It is expected that all board member will support the position of the board, even if they are in the minority. Two, Rights as a Parent. Board members retain their rights as parents within the district. When acting in the parental role, members should make it clear by saying, for example, "I am calling as a parent of student," and then the name. Three, Volunteer for Office Canvassing. At the June meeting, the board president will request a volunteer to canvass with other board members regarding their interest in serving as officers for the upcoming year. If there are multiple volunteers, the president will choose one, typically from the most senior volunteers. Four, Officer Elections. At the annual July reorganization meeting, the designated canvasser will present their findings, after which the elections for the board officers will take place. Any trustee may be nominated for a given position regardless of canvasser's report. Five, Open Ballot System. Board members' votes for a position will be cast in the open ballot system at the public reorganization meeting.
We're going to move on to 10.3, Motion, Please, for the First Read-in, Board of Education Policy, 1321, Duties of the President of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Just give me that one second again.
Okay, yep. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries for the first read-in.
Okay, 1321, Duties of the President of the Board of Education. Board President has no greater voting power than any other board members. The board president's role and duties include the following: reside at all meetings of the board, conducts meetings using parliamentary procedure, ensures the timeliness and orderly fashion of board meetings with encouraging open discussion and deliberation, guides the board to reach decisions in efficient manner, calls special meetings as necessary or on request, execute documents on behalf of the board, serves as the spokesperson for the board and works as the liaison between the board and the superintendent, works with the superintendent to set meeting agendas, shares information pertaining to the board work with all board members in a timely manner, and, in consultation with the board, responds to communications from the community received by the board, creates committees and liaison assignments in consultation with the board, appoints members of all committees of the board, serves as ex facto, excuse me, ex officio, as a member of committees. Thirteen, President will actively assist the orientation of new board members and assign mentors if warranted, considering the new members' experience, scheduling, and other relevant concerns. And number fourteen, Perform the Usual and Ordinary Duties of the Office.
Can I have a motion, please, for 10.4, First Read-in, Board of Education Policy, 1322, Duties of the Vice President of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries for our first read-in.
Ready?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. I always look for you for the green light. There you go.
1322, right ahead. You have the floor.
Okay. Duties of the Clerk.
No, Vice President. 1322.
22, I'm sorry. See, that's why I look for your green light.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Now I know.
Duties of the Vice President of the Board of Education, 1322. The Board of Education may, in its discretion, elect one of its members vice president, who shall have the power to exercise the duties of the president in case of absence or disability of the president. The vice president's position serves as a preparation for the position of president, and generally should be held by a board member with an interest in serving as president. In the case of vacancy in the office of the president, the vice president shall act as the president until the president is elected. Role, Role and Duties of the Vice President. One, Stands in Place of the President whenever the president is not available, serves as the sounding board for the president, review board's documents with the board president, and assist and review executive agenda prior to board meetings, serves as a liaison or will designate a liaison to the PTA council. The vice president will assist the orientation of new board members and assign mentors if warranted, considering new members' experience, scheduling, and other relevant concerns.
Thank you, Lawrence. Can I have a motion, please, for 10.5, First Read-in, Board of Education Policy, 1331, District Clerk Role? Motion, please?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, Any opposed? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries for the first read-in of 1331.
Okay. Duties of the District Clerk, 1331. The district clerk will be appointed by the board at his annual reorganization meeting and will serve for a period of one year. The clerk's duties. A, Attend meetings of the board and keeps records of its proceedings and records by name those in attendance. B, Prepares minutes of the meetings of the board, obtains approval of the minutes by the board at the next meeting, signs the minutes to signify their official standing, and forwards copies of the minutes to each member of the board. C, Sends notices of special meetings to members of the board, contacts, communicates with members as required. D, Sees that the proper legal notice and announcements are published in all specifications and items out on bid in accordance with state law. E, Maintain an up-to-date record of the board's policies and bylaws. F, Delivers to and collects from the president or the vice president such paper for signature as may be necessary. G, Distribute notices to the public announcing availability of copies of the budget to be presented at the annual district meeting in compliance with requirements of state education law. H, Administers oath of office as required by Section 10 of the Public Officers' Law. I, Gives written notice of appointment to persons appointed as inspectors of election. J, Calls meetings to order in absence of the president and vice president. K, Assumes other duties customary to the office. L, In the district's absence, a designee appointed by the board will assume all district clerk's responsibilities and duties, take minutes of the meeting, noting opening and closing of the time of them, and actions taken. The above duties of the district clerk are not intended to complete, are not intended to be complete, but should serve as a comprehensive guide in undertaking the duties of this office. The district clerk shall perform such duties as may be assigned from time to time by the board.
Thank you. Motion, please, for 10.6, First Read-in, Board of Education Policy, 1510, Regular Board Meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Questions, concerns, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carries for the first read-in. 1510.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Regular Board Meetings, 1510. The Board of Education Meeting Protocols. Opening Meeting Requirements. All meetings of the Board of Education must be open to the public except for portions that qualify as executive sessions under the Open Meetings Law. A meeting, quotations, is defined as official gathering of a public body for the purposes of conducting public business. A, in quotation, "public body" refers to an entity composed of two or more individuals that requires a quorum to conduct business, including committees and subcommittees, executive sessions. Executive sessions will be held only for matters permissible under the Open Meetings Law. Discussions in executive session are strictly confidential and not open to the public. Regular Meetings. The Board of Education of Mount Vernon City School District will hold regular meetings on the date and time established at the annual reorganization meeting unless modified during the subsequent board meetings. Regular scheduled board meetings will generally take place either on the third or the fourth, or the fourth Tuesday of every month. If a meeting date falls on a holiday, the meeting will typically be rescheduled to the nearest Wednesday or another Tuesday. The first Tuesday of each month will be designated, each month will be designated as a work session. If a work session date falls on a holiday, the work session will be typically rescheduled to the nearest Wednesday or another Tuesday. Meetings will generally begin at 6:00 p.m. Executive sessions, if necessary, will typically take place after the public portion of the meetings. Additional Meetings. Additional meetings may be scheduled as needed to continue discussions on key topics to hold executive session regarding specific personnel matters, contract negotiations, or litigation. Board members should keep Tuesdays available for these additional meetings. All meetings will adhere to the open law, Open Meetings Law, and will be announced with at least 72 hours' advance notice. Notification for other meetings will be given as soon as possible. Agenda Setting. The responsibility of setting agenda is shared by the superintendent, the board president, and the vice president. The superintendent will prepare the initial agenda, collaborate with the board, president, and vice president to review for each meeting. The agenda for each meeting will be prepared during the week prior to the meeting. Board members wishing to add items should contact the board president at least one week before the meeting. Agendas and written reports requiring action will generally be posted on board docs the Thursday before all board meetings. Paper copies will be made available upon request. Agendas and supporting materials will be distributed to the board members at least two days before the scheduled meeting, when possible to allow for careful review. The agenda and related items will also be made available to the superintendent, designated staff, news media, and members of the public, students, and parents by way of board docs. Public Requests. If an individual or group wishes to bring matters to the board's attention, they should submit, they should submit their requests in writing to the superintendent, who will then present the matter to the board. Any items added to the agenda after it has been disseminated to the board will be announced at the start of the meeting. Such items may be, may be excluded by a majority vote of the board. Meeting Notifications. The district will be notified, the district will notify, excuse me, the district clerk will notify the board members of each regular meeting in advance. The notification will include the meeting agenda and time. If a meeting date conflicts with a legal holiday, overlaps with another meeting, or if the board members are unable to attend to, to form a quorum, the board will select a new date for the meeting during the previous regular meeting and instruct the clerk to notify all members. Arrangements. A meeting may be adjourned to a future date and time by a majority of the vote of board members present, or as otherwise mandated by law. Committee Reports. Board members will provide periodic reports at the board/business meeting on their activities as a committee, members, and liaison. Committee reports should be brief and focused on key points. The board president has the discretion to preclude questions from board members to committee members for which the board member is a participant, as those questions should be addressed to the committee member sitting on that committee at that committee meeting. If a written report is necessary, the committee chair will inform the board president. Superintendent and Staff Attendance. The superintendent and designated staff members shall attend all board meetings, except when the topic is concerning the superintendent's evaluation, employment status, or salary as discussed. The board may request the attendance of additional individuals as needed. Video Conferencing and Public Notice. If video conferencing is used for a meeting, the public notice will indicate that video conferences will be utilized, provide the locations of the meeting, and inform the public of their right to attend the meeting at any of those locations. Live Streaming of Meeting. Board/business meetings will be streamed live, recorded for future reviewing. Working sessions may either be streamed live or recorded for future showing unless otherwise stated. Working Sessions. Working sessions are public meetings generally scheduled once per month, typically on a Tuesday when no other board meeting is scheduled that evening. These sessions will provide time for the board members to discuss business issues, but no public comment will be taken during these meetings. Business decisions will not be made during working sessions. Scheduled Considerations. In planning the annual meeting schedule, the board will aim to have one week each month without any school board meeting schedule. Board Meeting Dynamics. One, Respectful Listening. Members agree to listen to one another with an open mind and avoid interrupting. Two, Facilitate Discussion. The board president will ensure that all members have the opportunity to speak. If necessary, the president may request that members that take turns commenting on an issue with the rule that no one speaks twice until everyone has spoken once. Focus on discuss, on the discussion. The board president will facilitate the focus of the discussion. Time Limit for the Public Meetings. The goal for public meeting is The goal for public meeting is to adhere to a two-hour time limit. Preparation for meetings. To make the best use of time, board members should inform the superintendent and board president in advance of any items they intend to raise that may require preparation or research. Similarly, the superintendent will refrain from introducing any unexpected issues.
Can I have a motion please, ten point seven, first reading Board of Education Policy fourteen ten, policy development, adoption, and dissemination. Can I have a motion please?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions, all in favor? Any opposed, abstain, motion carries?
Policy development, adoption, and dissemination. Fourteen ten. The Board of Education shall reserve to itself the function of providing guides for discretionary actions of those to whom it delegates authority. The superintendent shall act as an advisor to the board in adoption and approval of written board policies. The board shall seek input from the staff and the community where appropriate. These guides for discretionary actions shall constitute the policy governing the operation of the school system. The formulation and adoption of these written policies shall constitute the basic method by which the Board of Education shall exercise its leadership in the operation of the school system. The study, the evaluation of reports concerning the execution of its written policy shall constitute the basic method by which the Board of Education shall exercise its control over the operation of the school system. All policies, proposals, suggested amendments shall be submitted in writing to the superintendent, briefly describing the proposal and why it is needed. The superintendent may designate a staff member or members to conduct independent research to evaluate the information within the proposal, to maintain a reference file for the board on all such proposals, and to draft policy proposals. Proposed new policies will initially be presented to the full board as an item for discussion only in order to permit time for evaluation and comment. The initial presentation will include the recommendation by the superintendent, including a reading of any completed draft and any reports done by staff or others. Opportunity will be given for concerned groups or individuals to react. All members and superintendents shall receive a copy of the policy proposal or amendments from the staff members responsible for drafting the same, as long as, along with a copy of the original proposal suggesting all the other relevant information and data at least two days prior to any meetings at which discussions or actions are scheduled. Review and adoption or, and/or adoption of policy proposals shall be scheduled on the agenda of a regular, of a regular meeting or special meeting. To permit time for the study of all new policies and amendments to policies and to provide an opportunity of, for interested parties to react. Proposed policies or amendments shall usually be presented as an agenda item to the board in the following sequence. Information items, distribution with agenda. This may be announcement that a policy is being formulated in particular area and that the interest persons may submit suggestions. Discussion items, first reading of proposed policies, policy or policies, response from superintendent, report from any board or advisory committee, assigned responsibilities in the area, board discussion, and directions for any redrafting. Ac, action item, discussion, adoption, or rejection. Amendments to a policy at the action stage should not be required, should not require repetition of the sequence unless the board so directs. The adoption of a new policy and/or amendment to an existing policy shall occur only after the proposal has been moved, discussed, and voted on affirmatively by the board of, by the majority of the board members at two separate meetings of the Board of Elections, i.e. the first reading and the second reading. The policy draft may be further amended at the second meeting. By a majority vote, the board may waive the second reading and complete the adoption of the proposed policy at its first reading. The formal adoption of the written board policy shall be recorded in the official minutes of the board. Such written board policy shall govern the conduct and affairs of the district and shall be binding upon the board members of the educational community in the district. It shall be the responsibilities, responsibility to keep its written policies up to date so that, so that they may be used consistently as the basis of the board actions and administrative decisions. I'll read that again. It shall be the board's responsibility to keep its written policies up to date so that it may be used consistently as a basis for the board's actions and administrative decisions. The superintendent is given the continuing commission of calling the board's attention to policies that are out of date or for other reasons appear to be, appear to need res, revision. The board will maintain an annual policy review. As the policies and regulations are added, revised during the year, the district clerk will make available to the board members current copies of all board-approved new revised policies and regulations. Each board member is responsible for keeping their manual update, updated. At least annually, the district clerk will prepare an updated table of contents for all policy manuals. Policies will also be available on the district website. Suspension of policies. When considering suspending policies and the board adopt, adopted regulations, the board should thoroughly discuss the reason for suspension and find suspension absolutely necessary. Policies and the board adoption, adopted regulations will be subject to suspension for specific purposes in limited time by the majority vote of all board members. Policy dissemination. The Board of Education recognizes the need for widespread familiarity with the district policies and regulations. The superintendent will establish and maintain a plan for preserving and making accessible the policies adopted by the board and the regulations needed to put them in effect. All manuals distributed to anyone will remain property of the board and will be considered as a loan, in quotes, to anyone or any organization whose possession they might be at any time. The manuals are subject to, are subject to recall at any time for updating.
Can I have a motion please for ten point eight, first reading of dra-
What's that in red, it said goals, I'm looking on.
Let me just see something. Yes, that's fourteen ten, hold on one second.
Yes.
Hmm. Hold on. You're right about that, this is a very bad copy I have here, hold on. Yes, forgive me for that, uh, it's just so faded on here. And I use red to point out notes for the board members to, to consider things when we look at policies, so. I will continue, goals. The district goals, there will be a goal-setting meeting with the superintendent and assistant superintendents no later than January thirty-first to discuss district goals. The superintendent will draft those goals for board, for the board review by mid-August to be determined, and will share the final goals with the community at the public meeting in the early fall of each year. The superintendent will provide reports on progress towards goals throughout the year as appropriate. In addition, the superintendent will report annually on progress towards academic goals. Board goals. The board will develop its own goals, separate from the district goals, at its annual retreat in July or as soon as, or as soon thereafter as practicable. Such goals will be related to the internal board working, not the work of the district. The board will review its progress on said goals mid-year and at the end of the year. The board will share final goals with the community at the public meeting in early fall of each year. I think we're complete on that.
Just a note of correction, it's July thirty-first, not January, just so we met.
Oh, did I?
I know you've read a lot tonight.
Yeah, did I say January?
Yes, it's okay.
May July, my favorite month.
Okay, so, a motion please for ten point eight, first reading of the draft nepotism policy. Questions, concerns, any discussions? Motion carries for the first reading.
So before I read this, just for the public, um, I'm reading a lot of these policies. This is the first ti, this is not the first time the board has received these policies so the public can have an understanding. They have vetted, they have asked questions, we made amendments. There might be the further questions that might go along, but just because I'm reading it for the first time, this is not the first time that the board has had an opportunity to get very warm with these, uh, with the policies. And we should note that the policies is not a creation of the district necessarily, it's the creation of the board that looked at the policies and say, here's some of the things that we would like for it to add, either technology or advancement as far as how we proceed over a period of time, and so those things are incorporated within. And they do this during their annual retreat. I receive that information, I then look at old policies, mesh the two together, come up with something that either is innovative or kind of tweaked, and then they go from there. So I'll read the last draft, which is nepotism. Nepotism. One, the purpose. This policy promotes transparency, impartiality, and public trust, I mean impartiality and public trust in the actions and decisions of the Mount Vernon City School District Board of Trustees, quote the board. It ensures compliance with New York State General Municipal Law, Article eighteen, Education Law, and Public Officers Law seventy-four, section seventy-four. And establish ethical standards to prevent nepotism and conflicts of interest in all board-related matters. Scope. This policy applies to all current and future Mount Vernon City School District Board of Trustee members in both their official and personal capacity as they related to the district business, as they relate to the district business. Definitions, family members. Includes but is not limited to a trustee's spouse, domestic partner, child, parent, sibling, grandparent, grandchild, in-law, step relative, or any person residing in the same household as the trustee. Conflict of interest defined, as defined in the General Municipal Law, section eight hundred, section three. A conflict, conflict of interest arises when a trustee has a direct or indirect financial or personal interest in any decision or action before the board that may impair the trustee's objectivity or independence of judgment. Nepotism. The act of using one's position to benefit a family member in employment, contracting, or any official matter regardless of the merit. Prohibitive contact, con, conduct, excuse me. A hiring and supervision of family members. In accordance with Education Law thirty-six, section thirty sixteen and relevant case law, no trustee shall recommend, advocate for, participate in deliberations, or vote on any family member's hiring, appointment, promotion, evaluation, demotion, or termination. Two, trustees shall, trustees shall not use their influence directly or indirectly to affect employment decisions involving family members or any employees. B, voting on matters involving family or financial, financially interests, or financial interests. Pursuant to General Municipal Law, section eight oh one, trustees shall recuse themselves from any discussion or vote where they or a family member have a direct or indirect financial interest. Two, a trustee with such interest must publicly disclose the nature and extent of the interest in the board minutes and refrain from participating. Acceptance of gifts. Consistent with Public Officers Law, section seventy-four, three D and F, trustees shall not solicit or accept gifts or gratitudes exceeding seventy-five dollars in value where in the form of money, services, goods, or favors from any individual, entity, vendor, or contractor doing the, doing, doing or seeking to do business with the district. Two. This prohibition includes indirect gifts or favors to family members or others that may reasonably, reasonably be interpreted as attempting to influence the trustee's actions. Disclosure requirements. As required under the General Municipal Law, section eight twelve, each trustee shall annually file disclosure statement listing any actual or potential conflicts, including family members employed by the district or involved in the district contracts. B, ongoing disclosure. Trustees must promptly report in writing to the board president and a superintendent any news or evolving, involving circumstances that may present a conflict of interest or appearance thereof. Ethics and conduct standards. Trustees shall adhere to the standards of the conduct set forth in the Public Officers Law seventy-four, section seventy-four, which includes acting in the public's best interest and avoiding any appearance of impropriety. Refraining from actions that may impair their independence of judgment or use of confidential information for personal gain or otherwise. Maintaining transparency and fairness in all board's dealings. Enforcement and consequences. Violations of this policy may result in the following. Public censure by the board, letter of admonishment, or note to the file. Two, board shall vote to initiate investigation into the alleged violation. If the violation is substantiated, the board member in question will be presented with formal charges, followed by a removal hearing. Three, refer to the New York State Education Department or Commission of Education under Education Law, section three oh six. Policy administration. The board president is, is in consultation with the district council and shall be responsible for overseeing compliance with this policy. Two, trustees are strongly encouraged to consult legal counsel when question arises about potential conflicts.
Thank you. Can I have a motion please to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation? The financial history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment.
Doctor, Doctor Strickland would like to address the public before we go into executive session.
So just really quickly, um, trustees, thank you for your patience. In line of the policies that are being read, there is one policy that, um, Mount Vernon, uh, the Mount Vernon City School District is a little behind on in getting through the readings, and that's around the, the cell phones. Cell phones will no longer be allowed to, um, be in the hands of students during the school day come September. This policy needs to be in place by August first, so we're going to have to expedite the, the policy, the adoption of this policy. Part of that adoption includes public hearing and public comment. We will need to do that either next Tuesday or next Thursday. And along with that, um, I, I think I was talking with our newly-appointed state monitor. She also has to do hearings from the public in which we hear from the public their thoughts or ideas around academics and the finances of the district. So, um, I'm trying to see if there's an appetite for next Tuesday for a public hearing or next Thursday for a public hearing. And, and I will say, I apologize, um, a, a lot of districts have known this was coming down the pike. We can only, you know, do what we need to do, and that's, uh, really ensure that we get into the space to get this passed and ratified before the deadline.
And, and just a note, it's drafted, superintendent has it, so it's just the other formalities that we have to go through in order to adopt it. So we're not waiting for any paperwork.
What is the pleasure of the board in terms of, can we do a poll on Tuesday or Thursday? Can you do a, a roll call on that? Rita, thank you Rita.
For Tuesday? Trustee Scott? Let's, I'm starting with Tuesday.
I'll just give you a...
No.
Or you can give you a preferred date?
My preferred date is Thursday.
Okay. Trustee Middleton? Your Tuesday? Okay. Trustee Brown?
Tuesday.
Either is fine. Okay. Okay, VP?
Either way. Either way.
Okay. And Trustee White?
Trustee White? Can...
I'm free any day.
Okay, thank you.
I will be out of the country next week?
No, I shouldn't say that. The twenty-second, I can't make it.
So Thursday for her. Thursday for her.
I will be out of the country.
So it looks, Tuesday is the day that works best.
So we would have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and we also need to poll trustee Kelly?
Right.
Thank you. So if there's anyone that will not be able to be in person on Tuesday, it's possible for you to join virtually. Then we can do that, but we need to have five members in person in order for that to occur so that we may have a in-person quorum. Okay? I'll try to, I will try to do it virtually from Italy.
No, no. And I'm sorry, just to further add, do we want to keep it at six-thirty? Or do we can, is there an appetite to move it up? I mean, I'm just, I would like to... Because, yeah.
Yeah, if to move it, that's fine.
So we're looking at five-thirty, six o'clock? What are you asking?
Twelve?
I think in order for, in order for people...
Um, so we...
We can do two hours?
I mean, I would say we don't actually know. I mean, it's, a lot of this is all set in stone. I just hate to say it. It's just for formality.
Really comment?
Yeah. But we have to be there for any comment on the policy, so we need to get that policy up, post it somewhere so folks can see. But I, I don't know if the appetite is around five. That would be great.
Or five-thirty, just because we want to get the public...
People that get home from work?
...to come from work.
Hey, all right.
So five-thirty?
I'll take it.
Okay, five-thirty.
Okay, we can agree on five-thirty. Also, we need to let the public know that this is a state-mandated policy across the entire state of New York that was enacted by the governor. So there is no option for this policy. It is mandated, and we must implement it.
Yep, you're absolutely correct. And we will definitely, we've already, as a team, started a communication plan on how all adults will be notified and students.
Any other old business or items we need to address or discuss? We will be assigning, we will be assigning committees. We can do that in, do we have to do that in open? Or we can do it in executive session? Okay.
We recently talked about having resolutions of some sort. Something said that there is a public record of who is sitting on what committee every school year. We ran into the question of who's been sitting on what committee for X amount of years, and no one had an answer. Nothing, and no, I'm sorry. It was spotty at best.
It's posted. It was posted on the website. It is posted, yes.
Okay. But if you want to look back historically...
Okay. Recently, it has been. But I want to give an opportunity to each trustee to weigh in